Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, September 12th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and your address. If you are calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hands, and *6 to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens. Is absent. Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stint. Is absent. Mr. Rubel.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bear, can we please have a swearing-in of the zoning board professionals?
Yes, everyone, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
I do.
The professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Okay, do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, are there any resolutions for tonight?
There are no resolutions.
Thank you.
I do have correspondence, though. I just want to let everyone know that the meetings are going to stay remote for the time being, and that also our next meeting is next Monday, the 19th, so don't forget.
Okay.
So that means October, we're still remote?
Yes, correct.
And that works. You know, we just didn't want to seem like we were fighting an uphill battle here. But if that's what the authorities want, that's what we're going to give them. So as long as we are...
Everybody else is not remote, we're the only ones.
No, I think the planning board is remote as well.
They are?
Yes.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, there were health issues with not the current group here, but some board members, and to do the in-person and remote in an inconsistent manner for both boards within the township didn't work, as I understand it.
Mr. Bear, as long as we can get through the order of business in this manner, and the public has a chance to participate, you know, that's what's most important.
I concur, Mr. Chairman, and there's actually more transparency and more public participation this way, since people don't have to leave their homes to participate.
Great. All right, Eileen, thank you for that. Is there anything else, Eileen?
No, that's it for tonight.
Okay, so then, on the agenda, we're going to move to the applications before the board. The first one up is case number BA 2204, which is Sina Holdings LLC. This is for a used variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Sina Holdings LLC as applicant and owner seeking a used variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to demolish an existing 3,672-square-foot, one-story frame commercial building and construct a 5,048-one-story butlet-type commercial building with associated gravel, concrete, and asphalt, driveways, and stormwater management basin. They are also proposing 30 gravel parking spaces and 80-foot gravel loading area and refuse enclosure immediately abutting the 12,373-square-foot, one-story commercial frame building that is to remain. A 352-square-foot, two-story addition to the existing single-family dwelling is also proposed on premises known as Block 49, Lot 36 dot 02, 342 Squankham Yellow Brick Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on July 11th, 2022, when it was carried to August 8th, 2022. On August 8th, 2022, the application was introduced and then carried to September 12th, 2022, with no further notice. Expiration date, September 24th, 2022. Eileen, who do we have?
The attorney for this case is Todd Cohen. I don't see him in the waiting room. I'm not sure if anybody else is there.
We have somebody raising their hand, I'm just gonna...
We have someone raising their hand, so hold on.
Yeah, he might be the one with the owner.
Look, the person who's ever signed in as...
There is Mr. Cohen.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon or good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. Todd Cohen for the applicant Senna Holdings. As the chairman indicated, we were last here on August 8th, when we presented a brief introductory to the case and gave a history of the property before the matter was carried. Since then, the applicant has submitted revised architecturals of the proposed new building, which meets the township architectural requirements. Our team worked with Jen's office in finalizing the changes, and I believe we are now in compliance with those requirements and ready to proceed. If that can be confirmed, that the architecturals have been received, I know they've been reviewed, and I have three witnesses this evening to present their case.
Okay, Eileen, has everything been received?
Yes, it's been received.
Mr. Cohen, you're good to go, sir.
I have with me this evening Mr. Richard DiFalcio, the professional engineer, who will explain the general application, the site improvements that are proposed, and address some of the comments in Charlie's letter. I have my client, Butch Senna of Senna Holdings, who's going to testify regarding the history of the property, the use of the site, and also address a lot of the questions raised and the use of the property and the operations. And finally, we have Mr. Jim Higgins, our professional planner, who will wrap up the testimony regarding the variances requested to see. If Mr. Higgins can be brought on, that'd probably be great. Also, there we go. Thank you very much. Andrew, would you like to have everybody sworn at once?
Yes. Well, that's probably easiest, whoever you want to start, Todd.
Just for purposes information, Mr. DiFalcio and Mr. Senna and myself are all in my office. We're sharing my screen, so if you bear with us when we switch it around, we'll try and do the best we can. For purposes swearing-in...
Why don't we, okay. Okay, so Mr. DiFalcio, Mr. Senna, and Mr. Higgins, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. And Mr. DiFalcio, can you please state your name for the record, spell your last?
Richard DiFalcio, D.I.F.O.L.C.O.
Mr. Senna, can you do the same?
Butch Senna, S.E.N.A.
And Mr. Higgins.
James Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Mr. DiFalcio is going to testify first.
Can we, you know, has Mr. DiFalcio previously on this application put his credentials on the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rich, if you then will be kind enough to review the proposed application with the board at this time.
He's on qualifications first.
No, he said you were qualified at the last meeting.
Why are you qualified? I believe you, Mr. Bear?
Maybe, I...
He'd be happy to do it again.
We started and then we got, there were issues about the architectural plans, I'm not sure.
So, Mr. DiFalcio, if you may, for the board, please put your qualifications on the record.
Yes, licensed engineer, state of New Jersey. Attended Rutgers University, I've been practicing for 40-plus years, and I own JKR Engineering. Do land development applications in Mammoth Ocean County. I've appeared before this board dozens of times over the last 40 years.
We accept your qualifications, Mr. DiFalcio.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the site is a developed existing site with a commercial and a residential use. The building that's proposed to be removed is a commercial building, sits in the center of the site. And that building to be removed, which is about 3,700 square feet, is to be replaced with a new balter-style metal building of about 5,100 square feet. So a similar-sized building in a similar location. The site has existing gravel, parking, and access aisle to the commercial portion. There's a gravel driveway to the existing dwelling, which sets to the rear or the easterly side of the property. There is a small addition proposed to the residential structure, which is no new bedrooms, but to make the kitchen larger and to add some closet space to the dwelling. The county board of health has basically signed off on the application. The county planning board has granted conditional approval for the application. We are on a county road. There is county drainage in front of us. We've designed the drainage system so as to avoid any impacts to the roadway drainage system. And the only comment the county has is that we widened the driveway to be a true 25-foot paved apron, and that holds true for both the commercial entrance and the residential entrance. So we will comply with the county requirement. The applicant is proposing a stormwater basin to manage the water from the roof of the new building. Very, very similar quantities from the roof of the other building. They're very close in size. This is not what they call a major project as relates to the DEP standards, or the township standards are not triggered, so it's not requiring the water quality for the groundwater recharge that is typical of a major project. However, we are attenuating the flow of stormwater. We have no discharge from this proposed stormwater basin. And the soil, which we tested in the field, very, very sandy, very, very dry, no water table, and the water infiltrates rapidly into the area. We are removing a septic system that formerly served the building that we are demolishing. The new building will not have any water or sewer connections or the need for any plumbing. It is just using it for commercial. The applicant will explain what he's using it for, but it's a commercial slash personally-used building. Half of the building will be for commercial use, the other half will be for the applicant's personal use for his vehicle. They're proposing a landscape buffer along the roadway, which consists of deciduous trees behind the existing row of mature maple trees that are on the site. And we're placing an evergreen buffer in front of the new building between the roadway and the building face, and adding foundation plantings to the building along the roadway side of the building, that's the west side of the building. We have one garage door serving the commercial side of the building, which will have a concrete apron, and it will be connected to the existing driveway which services the site today. The other side of the building, there is a gravel driveway leading to a second garage door, which is the personal-use side of the building. We're not proposing any curbing on the building, on the site. We're not proposing paving the parking lot that's existing. We are not proposing any sidewalks along the property frontage. And the existing site is buffered to the north from the original application, which was, what was the date of that, you know, back in the 90s? Maybe 1998, it was the original application, which required the 50-foot buffer on the north side, which was provided and was planted. And that buffer exists today.
Eileen, if you could put up picture number A16, I'm sorry, A17.
Charlie, do you have A17?
I'm sure it's A17, I don't have that as one of the...
Yeah, Todd, maybe you want to take a look again and see?
I have the exhibit list from the last meeting. I didn't get an updated list, but it was A17, A17 on...
That's it. Okay, that's it. So, A17, which has its number 6 in the top-left corner, is the existing buffer to the north of the site. That building that you see on the right side of the photograph is the existing commercial building to remain.
And if you put up A16, that would show the other side of the property, the existing buffer.
I'd like to see it.
That should be it, yes.
All right, and this is the view to the south. And beyond the large deciduous tree that's in the foreground of that photograph, there is an evergreen buffer that exists along the southerly property line. There is a single-family dwelling on the other side of that buffer.
Yes.
If you go to the cover sheet of my set of plans, which is sheet 1 of 7.
Mr. DiFalcio?
Yes.
So the building that's remaining, that was the old industrial NPS pipe fitting building?
Correct. Yes, it was.
National fittings.
Yes, national fittings, okay.
All right, if we can look at this sheet 1. Title sheet. All right. Charlie, if you've got that, if you can zoom in on the aerial view, right in front of the site, you can see the evergreen buffer, which is right above the word "Sheet Metal." Worker is down below that. That existing buffer is to the south of the site. The other side, we looked at on A17, wasn't it? That's the one right above Master Tool, correct. So those are the two existing buffers, north and south of the site. And that brown rectangle in the center is approximately the same location as the new structure, so it's the applicant's opinion and our opinion that that building is buffered to the north and south adequately. Everything to the east is wooded. And opposite the site, along the roadway, we are proposing a new buffer which appears on sheet... Sheet 5, if we could look at sheet 5 of my set of plans. Right there, so the proposed building is located, and then the existing maple trees, which are nice specimen trees along the roadway are spaced evenly across the frontage. We're supplementing those with a second row of maple trees, and then proposing 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, about 10 or 11 evergreen trees, which also appear to scale in the architectural rendering that was submitted. So those evergreen trees that are shown in that rendering would be to scale in front of the building between the building and the street. And that is the revised architectural plan that has been seen by Ms. Beam, and she has agreed that it does meet the standards of the township's architectural standard for commercial structures.
Christine, can you confirm?
I can. I spoke to Jen, and she's fine with the architecture for the building.
Thank you.
Mr. DiFalcio, can I, can you go back to the landscape sheet? I had called out the buffer just because it wasn't continuous. It is true that the metal building, that should be buffered well, but when you continue down the sheet, the existing building that's remaining, that is completely in view of the street right there, the parking lot as well.
Yeah, that's the existing structure that has been occupied and is occupied by the current applicant, has been operating there for how many years now?
Three years, November.
Three years. He's redone the building facade and roof. And if you've driven by the site, you've noticed the major improvement on the view of the building from the outside.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the board too, to share his point, so the property, this is Google Earth, Aerial imagery, April 2021. The property to north is residential zone, has a residential use. All the properties on the west side of the roadway are all residential uses, and then the property to the south has a residential use, so there's a 50-foot residential buffer required along the northerly property line, the westerly front property line, and then the southerly side property line. You heard Mr. DiFalcio allude to the 1998 approval for this property, which I believe created a subdivision to create adjacent residential properties, and there was a requirement to provide a 50-foot residential buffer, which does look like there's some plantings on this northerly property line here. You heard Mr. DiFalcio talk about some of this buffering along the southerly property line in this area. The applicant's architectural and their site plan is proposing some landscape plantings in a proximity to the west of the proposed structure, which is, I'm just showing the footprint of the existing structure here. Sherry, you're talking about like this area up here and then also kind of south of their existing driveway?
Right, and then continuing, yeah, there too, because if you're driving on the road, you see right in, so you can see, you know, the parking lot and the commercial buildings are exposed.
That's a residential one.
Yeah.
Right, that area.
So what you're looking at now is the existing building that is presently a commercial building with nothing aesthetically pleasing about it. We're going to replace that with the building that you saw in the architecture rendering, which is a handsome building. I don't know why you want to hide the building, but I understand what the ordinance says.
Right, I'm just quoting ordinance here.
Right, exactly. And that portion of the property is kind of tied into his residential dwelling that he has there. And they have the, you have the goats and you have the chickens on that side of the property, which he maintains is a fenced-in area, which I guess seasonally it can grow and shrink, but that's the fenced-in area shown, the enclosure for the animals. Yeah, I mean, we... Well, no, we don't want the goats to eat the trees, but if we do put some buffering along that edge of the right-of-way line to the south of the driveway, I think that might mitigate the view. We'd rather not buffer the whole thing solid, because we don't really see the benefit of buffering the entire property solid. It's existing today. This is not a new use, so we're trying to work with the existing condition best we can.
All right, can you work with the...
Mr. DiFalcio, I would like to remind you, though, you are requesting a D2 variance for the expansion of the non-conforming, existing non-conforming.
All right, Mr. Higgins will address that for sure. I understand that, but the use, the building is there, the use is there.
So, and to kind of chime on and add on to that, and Todd, I'll let, maybe this is something for the applicant to talk about. I know, looking at the 98 resolution, it talks about an industrial use in that building. Doesn't really talk about tenants or anything like that, whether there's multiple tenants. So I think that's also something that needs to be discussed by the applicant, how many are in there, how many have always been in there, you know?
We're going to testify to that in about a minute, yeah.
No, that's fine, I just, I don't want to put, you know, get too far off with the...
Right, but we're really focusing on the outside of the building, not what's happening inside the building. So from the outside, that's the important thing relative to buffering. Buffering doesn't impact the internal use of a building, so we wanted to make sure that whatever we do fits into the neighborhood and is an upgrade to the neighborhood. So the applicant has taken it upon himself to re-size the existing building, new roof on the building, and put up a properly-designed new building. So the outside appearance of the site in general will be an improvement. We're adding some landscaping. We're asking the board to grant a little relief on the full intense buffering of the portion of the property that is outside the scope of the center of the site.
Mr. Chairman, I think at this time it might be a good idea if we bring in Mr. Senna and let him testify about the facts of the property, the history of the property, the operations of the property, so the board has a better feel of exactly what goes on on a daily basis. So when we make these suggestions and we make our responses, then everybody's on the same page with the fact.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, the fact that, you know, we're familiar with the previous industrial use at the facility, right? And, you know, it would be beneficial to the board members to hear what the applicant's intent is for the repurposing of this piece of property, if it's going to be much different than the industrial previous use. So I concur.
Okay. Let's switch things around a little bit.
Evening.
Butch, you've been previously sworn. Could you identify yourself? You're the managing member of Senna Holdings LLC. That's the applicant and the owner of the property, correct?
Correct.
And you're the owner and operator of ECS, which is now the larger tenant on the site, is that...
And you're the owner and operator of ECS, which is now the larger tenant on the site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what does ECS do?
Uh we do material handling and machinery rebuild rebuilding.
And what does that mean in layman's terms?
That's as layman as I get. Uh we we take customers' equipment and refurbish it to their standards. Uh basically upgrading like PLCs and uh safety equipment. A lot of the older machinery that's in facilities today. Um don't have the safety requirements that OSHA looks for, so we basically take their machines and make them more OSHA compliant. Uh especially in today's environment with the the way our supply chain is, uh you know, we can rebuild a machine in. Four to eight weeks where it's taking anywhere from twenty four to fifty four weeks to get a new machine uh of that caliber.
Okay, and you purchased the property in November of two thousand nineteen, correct?
That is correct.
And can you give the board just a brief history of the property prior to your purchase?
Uh the Ragula's purchased the property in the late sixties uh and started national fitting somewhere along in that way. Uh and from what I'm told with the history between the two buildings, uh they both have. Uh a substantial amount of electricity in them, three phase power, one has eight hundred amps, the other has four hundred amps. Uh to handle the machinery that they were using to make fittings back in the day. Uh then somewhere around in the late seventies, uh Mr. Ragula started rebuilding machines. And these are, if you think of pipe threading machines, these aren't the kind that you see at the Home Depot. These are. Very large, uh you know, seven, eight thousand pound machines that do industrial fittings. Um when everything started going overseas as far as pipe fittings go, he found that he wasn't going to be able to stay in that business and be competitive. Uh but he was very competitive as far as rebuilding and repurposing the machines that uh the industry was using worldwide. Uh so that's what he had done. Uh and I'm told he had as many as eighty people between the two buildings in the seventies. So along the way, they just started rebuilding machinery and that's kind of how I met them along the way. Uh we were doing some of the same things that they were doing and that's how we kind of came together. And then as uh Mr. The 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 elder Ragula had passed away. Um they were looking to downsize and offered me the building, so we made an agreement.
Um and there's three tenants, including national fittings and yourself, correct?
Correct.
And you received the CCO for your business ECS and the three other tenants when you purchased the property.
That is correct, yep.
And the single family residence that's occupied by your daughter and son-in-law?
Correct.
And you're proposing a three hundred and fifty-two square foot addition. Um that's kind of small addition. What's the purpose and explain?
The the house was built in eighteen sixty-six. Uh my son-in-law is six-four. If you've ever been in some of these older homes, uh the ceiling isn't very high. So uh even my daughter is five foot tall and her hand, her her arms hit the ceiling when she's trying to change her shirt. So the objective is to to raise the ceiling up and uh give them a substantial room in there and uh and a kitchen.
But there's no additional bedrooms, you're keeping the same one, but.
Nope, just the, just what is there bedroom wise, yeah.
Um and since you moved into the property. Uh I'm sorry, before, yeah, since you moved into the property, you've done some improvements, is that correct?
Yes, many.
All with township approvals and permits?
A hundred percent correct.
Um could we see slides one and two? Um I'm sorry, that's not one and two. They'd be A twelve and A thirteen. Well, either one first. These are pictures of what the property looked like when, you could explain that picture.
Uh this is ac- actually, this is partially cleaned up when we purchased the building. Um there were a couple of hardscaping and landscaping people that were renting there. And uh they had an array of different, I assume, leftover materials and stuff. So uh that was the chore getting cleaned up. That you're probably looking at about still fifty percent of it there. We had gotten rid of. Of fifty percent of it by the time this picture was taken. Um as we got, you know, you're kind of excited when you first get a place, you weren't thinking about before and after pictures till later on. Um but this was the start of uh the renovation.
And if we could see number one, or which would be A twelve? Thank you. Butch, again, could you explain that?
Again, this is where we started to clean up. We haven't done any of the real major renovations. This was just uh some of the debris and everything that you saw. Uh taken off of the property. Todd, and to clarify for the board, these are twenty nineteen when the applicant bought the property?
Yes. And now could we see uh. They thought there's ten and nine, so that would be A twenty. And twenty-one.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
So. I heard that there's. Four tenants in the building now, is that correct?
Including my client, correct?
And who are the others?
We get, that's my next question. Could you explain the picture, please?
Yeah, this is uh we've graded the property, did uh crush concrete in here. The the siding and windows have been replaced at this point and the roof has been done. Well, roof was the first thing that we did.
And if we could see A twenty-one.
That was when we were starting to doing the roof and they were just getting started on the siding at this point.
Um addressing the chairman's question about the tenants. Could you identify the tenants that are there today and the square footage that each?
Yeah, uh Master Tool is on the very end of the building. They're a machine shop. They uh take up twenty-five hundred square feet. Then there's Micro Matt, which is another machine shop, and he takes twenty-two hundred feet.
And how long have they both been there?
Although um Matt's been there eighteen years and Master Tool has been there, I think, twenty-five years. And then uh the last portion of it, of the people there are the Ragulas that are still in there and they have twenty-five hundred square square feet also.
That's national fitting.
That's the national fitting, yeah.
And you take the balance of.
And I take the balance of the property.
Now, as far as, before we get to the the new building. As far as the hours of operation as the site exists today with all tenants. How was that? What is, what are the hours?
Eight to five P M.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, correct.
What goes on on Saturdays?
Sometimes we're just in there tinkering with our own personal things.
But no, no major operation?
No major operations, no.
And what about the total number of employees on the site at any given time?
Uh combined with all the tenants on a on a busy day, there is a total of probably twelve. It probably really averages about like today was a busy day, there was two, four, four, there was eight. So and that that's a busy day, so worst case scenario is ten to twelve.
Okay, and you run one shift, that's it?
One shift, that's it, correct.
Not like the old days?
Well, no. Well, also, you know, we travel too, so there's a lot of times we're not even in the building. We just spent nineteen months in Fishkill, New York at the Gap facility in in New York, so. My crew, my guys weren't even in. Oh, I'm sorry. My guys weren't even in the building at that point because we were doing a a facility for uh. Like you guys know Gap closed, Old Navy, Banana Republic, so uh we were renovating uh a facility for them for their new online that they're doing.
And to give the board an idea like the traffic mix on the site, what do you expect as far as UPS? Tractor trailers, box trucks, what what?
We get uh basically two UPS trucks come a day, you know, one for pickup, one for delivery. Uh that's pretty much. Clockwork every day. And then uh we probably combine with all of us, maybe get two tractor trailer loads and that's typically going to be steel. For whatever one of us may be working on or twice a month.
And and what does the tractor trailer come in there for?
They just come in for deliveries.
Like what do they deliver?
Uh steel, typically steel, and then UPS is usually parts for peripheral, whatever we need for a project. A lot of time we'll go and pick out, pick it up ourselves and bring it back.
No, no hazardous materials.
Nothing, no.
No environmental issues, nothing.
No, we don't deal with anything that uh any hazmat.
What about refuse? Anything, anything but normal refuse?
Everything, everything, we we have recycling pails out there for, you know, that we separate copper, stainless, aluminum, steel. Uh cans, bot- and we have plastic bottles that we recycle in another one and then the corrugate goes out. Where there's a local recycling center right in downtown Farmingdale and that's where we drop off our corrugate.
Any outside storage and equipment, anything outside?
One fork truck that is uh. National fittings, that's been there forever.
Okay. But again, no maintenance outside.
Don't have a guy come if he has to. For the fork truck, it's too big to take anywhere else, so.
Um what about lighting? Is the lighting sufficient for your site?
We have uh and on the existing building, we have a an LED light that lights up the the dock when we need it. And then we have a motion detector light that's in front of the main office door. Which you see right there, a little left at that F one fifty. I try not to put too much lighting there because, you know, we don't want to bother the neighbors.
Uh the existing second building on site. What's, what was in that? What was the purpose of that? What what national fittings do with?
That was an extension of national fittings. That had bathrooms and everything in there for employees. There's actually a septic system that we have to dismantle on that property. Uh and they were doing their same machinery, like I said earlier, that has four hundred amps of three phase power. For the amount of machinery that they ran back in the day.
So the entire thirty-seven hundred square foot building then was used commercially?
Correct.
Until it wasn't.
Correct, till we till we took it over.
Okay, and your proposal is to knock it down?
Yes.
Put up the attractive building that we saw in the architectural. And what are you going to propose to do in that?
Basically, that building is going to really be split fifty-fifty between my my work and then. Uh basically, you know, my daughter has a little farm going on there with uh goats and chickens and stuff that uh she enjoys. Basically because she has free veterinary service from my daughter, so she has a little format. So that'll be uh equipment and I also have a a truck that I restore that I'm going to be using in there working on that, so. Half of it will be for personal use.
So less of the building will be used commercially than it was before?
Correct. Occasionally, I get equipment that is larger than will fit in the existing building, so I need to have access to put in a a larger piece of machinery for rebuild.
Uh parking. Do you feel that twenty-two spots would be more than adequate?
Oh, most definitely.
What you need?
Yeah, there's, there's never more than ten vehicles there, ever.
And you've been in there now three years, so you.
Three years, right.
You're now looking to hire more people or employees?
Nope. I'm sixty-two years old. I'm not going to increase the size of my company now.
And all those other businesses have been there quite some time.
They're, they're all my age or older, so no, no one's increasing the size of their business at this point. We just want to sustain ourselves and make a living.
Um and any need, there was a comment in Charlie's letter about maybe need for parking or. Handicap parking at the second building, do you see any need for that at all?
No, uh well, that building's level uh to the ground, the new building. Uh so there's really no stairs or anything going into it and we very rarely have anybody handicap show up.
Were there any visitors public? Does the public come to the site at all?
Very rarely. We might have a meeting once a year at our building and uh somebody might come and pick up some parts, that's about it.
Um I don't think I have anything further from uh Mr. Shana, the board has questions, this would probably be a good time.
All right, Mr. Cohen. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so uh just going back to the use. Uh the steel that gets delivered to the site, do you ever have any leftovers? Do you store that anywhere? Is it inside the building, outside the building? Or is everything that you don't use, is wasted and gets carted offsite?
I didn't understand the question.
Like if you order, if you order excess steel, right, you don't, and you have leftover, do you have like a boneyard kind of where you keep remnant pieces for the? There is, there is a spot in the back corner of the property. Uh that we will stage some stuff for a little while, but it's never, we try to utilize everything we have and any scrap. Uh we, there's a a dump trailer that we utilized uh with one of the guys. That does some scrapping and we just give it to him. Okay, we don't, we don't try to hold a bunch of steel, especially with the way stuff comes and goes these days. Okay, so if it is stored externally to the building, it's in some kind of container where it's like concealed and invisible and not as. Yeah, like right now, uh if you came by there, you'd find some corrugate out toward the end of the building because we're. To the point with. When we got our s- our our CCO, they had asked us the the ceiling and everything was in pretty bad shape. I don't know if you want to show them that picture at this point while I'm discussing it.
Sure.
It'll be a better indicator of what's going on. She's going right there. This this is basically what the interior of the building looked like when I took it over. Uh so when uh your building inspector Steve came through when we first bought bought the property, you can imagine. Um hi- his laundry list of what he wanted us to do to take the building over. Uh we have been doing that as we're as we're going through. Um so the very last part of the building. Uh that we're doing right now, there's some corrugate sitting outside that's going to go up into the ceiling. Yeah, we're doing the insulation and then the corrugate will go up. You go to one of the the next picture.
I think seven and eight, maybe.
That's, that's one, yeah, that's part of the building where we renovated the ceiling. And put LED lighting in, and that's what we're doing throughout the building. So what I'm saying is that's why you'd see some material sitting outside right now because they're taking it as they need it. Uh they can't work. It's a small area, so they really can't work and leave it where it's sitting, but it will be used within the next couple of days.
During your operation.
Well, during operations, yeah, we just bring in what we need and we use it, right. Exactly, like I said, it'll sit outside for a short time. We bring it in and. Cut it up and leave. It it's not there for any length of time. The majority of our work, if we're setting steel up, it's going to a job site. Gotcha, okay. Now I just want to make sure it's clear for the board that it's, you know, anything that. Yeah, it's not going to look like sad. No, no comment, but um uh. Uh another question that I have and it's just literally just slipped out of my mind. Okay, so I know there was, you talked about prior tenants when you purchased the property. There was masonry block and things outside from like a hardscape or paver kind of contractor. Is there any intent, you know, obviously, you you say most of the tenants have been here for long term, twenty plus years. You know, um you know, as businesses go along, ownership changes hands. Is there any intent to? For those tenants to move out and some other kind of uh user other than, you know, material handling to come into those? No, there won't, there won't be any landscapers or hardscapers there. Okay. And then the tractor trailers, right, we said that's two per month, right, and they're just doing the deliveries and they're not parked on the site? No. And then any vehicles that you have are passenger vehicles for employees? Do you have any like box trucks or anything like that? No, we have, we have an F one fifty and F three fifty pickup that is there for our employees to use. Okay, do you do any maintenance of the of the gravel parking area or anything like that? No, our vehicles are, we have a fleet service with a uh Jersey Diesel in town and then uh tire craft over on Route nine in Houll. He takes care of the gas vehicles. And then during like snow, you know, you guys are responsible for plowing and maintaining and all that kind of stuff and then. At the end of the winter season, if it needs to be supplemented because there's potholes, you guys regrade and everything to maintain, so it's good from a fire access perspective. Yep, when we uh took the property over, the the both the driveway and the the building were in pretty rough disarray. So we took that and actually had it graded and um. Put crust concrete on it to prepare for, hopefully at some point where we're at right now, to be able to put blacktop coming in on it and then it'll be a a smooth setup. Okay, and then just to point out for the board's uh perspective, so I know the plan schematically shows thirty parking spaces. On the plan, but it's the applicant's testimony that you really only need anywhere from like ten to twelve on an on a busy day in front of the site, right? So so while there's, while there are thirty spaces shown, that's just for schematic purposes. I just, it's a clear distinction, Todd, and I'm. I just want to make it because the new EV charging laws, when it's over twenty-five and everything like that, you know, technically it's required. This is just to show that, you know, if there ever is a need, there is space for people to park, but really. It's your representation, you only need like ten or twelve spaces on a busy day.
That's correct, Charlie, and I believe we testified that, you know, we might put out twenty-two just to make it nice, but we we don't, definitely don't need the the thirty for sure.
Correct. Okay. Um as far as the um site. So you talked about the existing building that had bathrooms, that's all getting ripped out, so you're going to get certificate abandoned in for the septic for that building. Um obviously, the new building, you said there's no bathrooms for that addition, but there is a kitchen, so just obviously any. Approval is going to be on Board of Health, so they'll make determination on whether any, you know. That the septic can handle that. Oh, correct. Okay, it's, we're not adding anything to the house.
Right.
You know, there's no bathrooms or anything being added to the house. It's an existing bathroom that'll be renovated. Is it, but is there a new kitchen? Or is that? That's that, it's, it's a, it's going to be a new kitchen, but the existing kitchen is what's coming apart. Okay. So that's the kitchen right now. If you look at the front of the building where it's at, that's where the kitchen is at, so it's actually going to get moved out. Okay, all right, now I think that's an important distinction and obviously you'll get Monmouth County Board of Health approval for that, so. Correct. Um and then as far as uh environmental, just for the board's perspective, there is a sea one water at the way. Eastern part of the property, I think the applicant's plan did show wetlands and things like that. Um you know, based on the applicant's plan. You know, I think all their disturbance is well beyond three hundred.
You know, I think all their disturbances well beyond three hundred foot from the center line of the stream. So I just wanna put that on the record for the board. Um, and then Todd, I'll just have some more questions when Rich gets back and given site plan testimony. But that's really all I have from a use perspective right now, Mr. Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Charlie. Christine, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any uh, questions of this witness. Uh, when Todd comes back, I might have some additional questions and. Obviously, I'm sure I will of the planner.
Okay. Well, Todd, I'd like to open it up to the board members to see if they have any concerns or questions at this time. So can I see my board members, please? I'm gonna start with Mr. Rubell.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hughes.
I think I'm uh, pretty good right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
I'm ashamed. I'm pretty good.
Mr. Roscoe.
So far, so good.
Mr. Cantor?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so. We've asked the, uh. The board members have no questions, but I have do, one comment that I'd like to make, Todd, before we move forward. And that is that, you know, Ms. Sparrow had talked about, you know, our ordinance. And that the fact that we got residential across the street. Uh, you know, the buffering, right? I think we need to, I need, I think we need to take a closer look at at least putting some sort of plantings. That meets the intent of the ordinance. Across the front.
My client did mention to me that he would not be, have an objection to that. I'm sure we could sit down with Sherry and work something out that would work for both sides.
Thank you, sir.
I would, um, just encourage that also, just, you know, while. That the site might have operated with the commercial use, um, they are seeking a D two variance tonight. So I think anything they can do. To kind of buffer um, the residential uses from what's happening on site would be a good thing.
Thank you, Christine.
We'd be agreeable to that condition.
Sherry? You're good?
Yeah, uh, just to be clear, um, for when I make requests, um, we're gonna add additional landscaping. Um, in that open field area as well as the existing building that's remaining.
That's what you requested, I believe, right?
Yep.
That's what you request. When Charlie showed the shot from Google Earth. Of the side of the building that you can still see, even though it's in front of the house. We agreed that we would put supplemental plantings in that part of uh. There you go, Charlie. Okay, you thought, you're talking about over here, right?
Right, yeah, cuz also you know, you have the trash enclosure in the parking area. So I'd like to, you know, get a little uh, landscaping along the parking. And some of that side of the building.
Okay, we'll address both sides.
Okay, we can work on that. That's fine.
So.
Interject here for a second.
Sure.
Um, on that one side of the property, um, there is power lines coming in through there. So I have to watch where I put trees. Just so you know, and also there is a sewer drain that runs through that property there also. So I mean, I have no objection to putting some trees in there, but. They have to be, I think, done gingerly.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, we'll be able to find either a species that works in that area, like under the wires or shift them back. And, and it doesn't have to be in a straight line. You know, you certainly have the space for it.
Cuz I believe when they did the um. The new house where that buffer was put in on the north side of the property. The county came in and they put a storm drain all the way back to the stream. That runs, I believe, actually those trees I believe are right on top of the storm drain.
The pine, the, the pines behind there?
The county did that.
Okay.
It's a county road.
You know where that is and it's marked, we'll be able to figure something out. That's fine.
It's on a plan. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's on a plan. Yep, there's a drain right there.
Yep, I see it.
And you see where the power lines are? So I have no problem. I'll put, put trees along that edge.
Yeah, I mean, we could, again, it doesn't have to be the same across entire, you know, we could go with something smaller when you get in that area. Of the wires and then, you know, a different species by the.
I didn't know what part of the property you wanted them, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, I, I'd like to buffer that the side of this building. And then maybe we can get something a, a little to buffer the parking lot there as well. Um, cuz there's an evergreen, but you missed it. Um, go back. Yeah, there's an evergreen tree, but as you can see, um. It's a pine, so pines don't keep their low limbs. So they don't really do much for buffering when they get older.
Okay, we'll figure something. Come up with a plan.
Okay.
I have no problem with trees.
Good.
Okay, um. Mr. Bear? Yes, is it a good time to open it up to public or do we wanna let the? Planner continue and um, DeFalco to finish up his testimony?
However, the, you prefer to proceed, there has been. We've been on for about an hour with the two witnesses, so you may wanna. I guess have questions so people don't forget them for these two.
Well, it looks like we got a hand raised. I don't know if that's for us. So my fellow board members, can we uh? Can we open it up to public at this time for uh? Anyone in the public that wants to ask any questions of the applicant?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Back on.
I've got a second for Mr. Roscoe. All in favor? All right, okay. Eileen?
The meeting will now be open to the public. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
And then, and then uh, Michael Getman off.
We're gonna bring in Michael Getman off. He has a question.
All right, I should be unmuted now. Can you hear me? Yes, can we see you, Michael?
I'm trying, um.
Bottom left.
Yeah, I'm looking for it. I'm sorry, I'm not used to the Zoom. Okay.
There you are.
All right.
Michael, before you proceed, I'm gonna have Mr. Bear swear in. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Mr. Getman off, do you swear that? Testimony you uh, provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
I do.
He's sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, and we got his name and, and, and address for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Getman, please uh, state your name, spell your last and provide your address for the record.
All right, uh, my name is Michael F. Getmanoff. And last name spelled G E T M A N O V is in Victor. My address is three, four, three Squonkham Yellowbrook Road. I'm at block fifty, lot thirty one. Okay?
Yep.
All right, um. I'm directly across the street from the uh, building that uh, the centers wanna replace. And uh, I see you got some concern about um. What the visual impact would be onto the community. Uh, unless you stop directly in front of the building, you're not gonna see it as well as I see it. Because when I sit out on my porch. I look directly across the street to that building. So I don't think there's gonna be anybody more. Uh, visually impacted than we will be from this uh. Proposed construction. When the centers say they wanna improve this. I've got no doubt in my mind that's exactly what they're gonna do. All right, um, they've already fixed one building up. That was looking pretty bad. And they did it tastefully. They did it quickly and I, I'll tell you, while that property is never, I've been here eighteen years and while that property has never really. Been bad for say. It certainly never looked as good as it has since the Senate stuck ownership. And I have absolutely zero concern about what they're gonna do with this building across the street. I've been in there and I'll tell you, um, I'm not an engineer, but. That building's unusable and uh. You know, if, if they're not allowed to put this or replace this building, it's just gonna keep getting worse. So I mean, if, if visual impact is a concern. Not doing anything is gonna make a bigger visual impact on this community than letting them go ahead with their plans. So, um, yeah, we're all for it on this side. And uh, you know, like I said. The centers have greatly improved the property as it is and I feel they're gonna continue to. So.
Well, Mr. Getman off, you know, I'm happy that, you know, they're being a good neighbor and.
They are a good neighbor.
Yes.
And that's the thing too, um, you know, we, we take care of each other out on this end of the uh, town. And they, they fell right in line with that. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
Uh, Mr. Getman off, thank you for taking the time to come to the zoning board meeting tonight. That's, that's um, that's great to hear.
Thank you for hearing me.
I second that, Glenn. Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Getman off, do you have anything else you'd like to ask or say?
Really? Oh, it just maybe, you know, when I knew there was another business moving in there. I had a slight concern about. At, at first, was there gonna be any additional traffic? Not in the least. Not in the least, you know, it's. You'd hardly know they were over there. I, I, I'm, I'm not kidding.
Great.
So, no concerns.
Thank you, sir. If you, if you don't have any more questions or comments.
I'm good.
We'd like to open it up to others. Thank you.
All right. Have a great evening.
You too now. Eileen, is there anyone else?
There is no one else currently raising their hands. But if you're calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Okay, so uh, may I have a motion to close the public, please?
Still moved.
Second?
Back on.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eileen? We are close to public, so we're going to turn it back over to Mr. Cohen and we're gonna continue to hear some more testimony.
Mr. Chairman, um, we do have our planner has to testify, but I think Charlie wanted to get some engineering things out of it. Maybe if he and Rich can. Charlie, you have some specific questions or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just go through it real quickly with uh, Rich, if you wanna just put him back on the camera real quick. So we.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, so we talked about the uh, buffer stuff. Uh, I'll just note for the board's reference. County planning board issued a conditional approval as Mr. DeFalco noted, they're required to widen the driveway and I believe it was pave it. Uh, twenty five feet into the site, uh, at a stop bar. Um, I do wanna note for the board's record, at that driveway, there is an existing sign ECS that I believe is in the public right away there. So I'm just putting it on the record for the board's reference. It's an existing sign that, you know. Uh, I believe has been there for a long time. So uh, they're not proposing any changes to it, Todd, right? Correct?
Right.
So and the county planning board did not put any comment or issues with it. So I just wanna put that on the board's record. We're not granting any variance. Cuz it's, you know, not our right of way, but just putting it on the record. Uh, we talked about border health, uh, we talked about uh, fire with the applicant, how he maintains it with snow plowing and supplementing it at the end of the season. That was one of the comments in the fire board, uh, in the uh, Fire Bureau's memo. Um, you, environmental, we talked about everything being well. To the rear of the site, Rich, you agreed with the, my comment that the water body is. You know, and all the development is more than three hundred feet away from the center line of that stream in the back and then.
That's correct.
And a, and a good distance away from any wetlands or associated buffer.
Yeah, the L O I, I think, states that distinctly, so.
Okay, uh, regarding the stormwater management, uh, as Mr. Falcon noted, it isn't a major development. They're under an acre disturbance. Under a quarter acre of new impervious. They're actually making the gravel parking area a little bit smaller uh, to, to clean it up. Uh, freon soils did have a question about there being outlet control structure. Rich, I know right now it's just a grass bottom basin and you're showing everything's gonna infiltrate. And I know you said sandy soils and we did a test pit. But I haven't been provided with anything. Um, my recommendation would just be provide a positive discharge for that. And then that way you don't need to put in a sand bottom or anything like that. Said something the applicant's amenable to.
That sounds good. Yep.
Okay, uh, we talked about.
Um, since you're talking about the basin, I made a comment about the turf, um. It says on the plans that turf will be used for the basin. I, I really prefer something else besides turf. So they're not, you know, doing weekly cuts and fertilizing it and using pesticides and whatnot.
Well, it's turf today and we're proposing turf, so we're not adding any new fertilizer and we're not. Take it away any new fertilizers. So if the uh. If the infiltration.
We request like a low mo or no mo seed mix in the basin area, just so you don't have to be in there every week.
Yeah, so Sherry, you're not talking about sod. You're talking about like a low maintenance, like uh, metal mix or something like that.
Metal mix, like a wildflower mix.
It doesn't even have to be wildflower. I mean, you certainly can do that, but there's a lot of mixes that require only twice a year cut.
Right, right. Low mo seed mix. Yeah. Okay, yeah, we have that.
So, and then we talked about the lighting. There's no improvements proposed for the Billy Mountain Light for the parking area. You heard the applicant provide testimony. That they've been there for a number of years. Todd, hours operation Monday to Friday, eight to five, right? There's no need for overnight lights or anything for the building.
Right.
Uh, the, so the sidewalk, our ordinance is required sidewalk or along the frontage or a waiver. So I'll leave that to the discretion of the board. Looking at the aerials, this is in a pretty rural area of town where there are no curbing sidewalks along the property frontage. So, you know, to put it in there, I don't know if it would be out of place, but if the board does grant a leave, the applicant is required to make contribution to the fund. Uh, for sidewalk. So I'll leave that up to the board's discretion for the end of the night here, Todd. Um, curbing around the parking area, I take no issue. Looking at arrows, it's been like that for a long period of time. The applicants actually cleaned it up and formalizing it. Um, the driveway, they do need uh, like a waiver from the, the pavement section for parking areas. Uh, you heard the applicant provide testimony regarding the long history of the use of the property with the parking area for twenty plus years. So I take no exception to that. And just to add to that, Mr. Chair. The parking area that's shown on the plan is by and large the same as it was shown on the nineteen ninety eight. Approval subdivision. So, um, you know, it's not one of these sites where things were continuously growing or doubling in size. Uh, so I don't take issue to that. Um, they do need technical relief from, you know, uh. Plantings between the parking area and the building. You know, you heard the applicant's testimony regarding the site operating and laying it out. Has been like that for a long period of time. I think with the changes that they're gonna do with plantings along the frontage. You know, will help with some of the buffering of the parking area. So I'll defer to uh, Sherry on that, the architectural. Um, we heard Jen and Christine's comment on that, about it being enhanced. Um. That's really all I have from a site plan perspective. It was just making sure that the basin had a positive discharge, so that way we're not having a. Two foot, uh, you know, wet pond in a front yard that doesn't, doesn't drain, so.
Thank you, Charlie. Um, just to revisit the sidewalk issue, I understand the ordinance, um. We did some calculations. It's gonna be like a fourteen thousand dollar whack to the applicant if we get a waiver. Uh. With all the other improvements he's doing to the site and volunteering to do all the additional landscaping, I just think that would be. Wildly unfair uh, to impose that kind of a burden on this applicant. Is there any way around that? I'm just being very open about it. I, I just, you know, we talked about it. I explained it to him. Um, it's just a horrible thing if there's absolutely no sidewalk in this area and he's gonna put all the additional plantings and everything that the board wants. Uh. Can we restrict it to the residential frontage? Is there a way to limit it? I'm trying to be creative.
Um, I mean, it's really up to the discretion of the board typically, you know. We try to encourage sidewalk, um, and I think we've said before, Jen's definitely said before, you know. Someone has to be the first one to put it in. If there's no sidewalk in the area and you don't want to. They don't need to, you don't think they need to put it in, that's one thing, but I really, you know. They don't need to, you don't think they need to put it in, that's one thing, but I really, you know, it's up to the discretion of the board, how you.
Andy, do they have the right to waive it off again?
I don't think so. May have to look at the ordinance at issue, but I don't think so. I'm trying to get it up as we're talking.
Mister Chairman. Are there, are there sidewalks on either of the adjacent properties? Well, and would this be a sidewalk to nowhere basically, or, or is it continuous to anything?
Well, when you, when you go up towards the, uh, intersection where the high school is. And, and, and so forth. There is a, there's no sidewalk across from the high school, and as you work, make your way down. Towards this property, I do not believe there's any sidewalk. From that corner to this property. So it's all farmed on the corner there. It's still rural.
That's correct, Mister Trump.
And, and with the, we saw the pictures of the, the really pretty trees. On the front of the property, would it be putting in a sidewalk? Damage those trees at all?
Maybe counterproductive.
So I did confirm, um, that in order to have the, uh. The, the fee waived, they would have to go to the governing body, um, to do that. So they either need to pay the fee. Put in the sidewalk, or that would be a relief they would need to request from the governing body.
It's, I'm pretty sure and Sherry can correct, it's like the tree fund ordinance, either make the plantings on the site, or you seek a waiver to make the contribution to the tree fund. You know, and any relief of that would require them to go to the governing body.
So we can request a waiver of the sidewalk, you can enforce the condition and we can then take that to the council and request a waiver. I think that's our best shot.
And they can give us a letter of supporting and settle.
Okay. So much for the sidewalk.
So much for the sidewalk.
Um. We ready for Mister Higgins?
Yeah. We're ready for Mister Higgins.
Mister Higgins, you still there?
I am still here.
Your credentials on the record, please?
Yeah, sure. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for about four, over forty years. I testified before this board. On numerous occasions as an expert in the field of planning. And I've testified before norm, numerous boards throughout the state as well as superior courts throughout the state.
Except your credentials, Mister Higgins, thank you.
We'd just like to comment that in looking at the attorney, the engineer and myself, there's more than a hundred and twenty years of experience here.
Okay.
What I'll do, uh, when you've had the application. Explain to you, the site's been explained, so basically I, I think we've been going at this for over an hour now. I'm going to try and keep this as simple as possible and as brief as possible. Um, it's the A R E two-two zone. One of the goals of that zone. Is the preservation of rural and agricultural users and uses and preservation of the rural character and.
Did we lose Mister Higgins?
He just disappeared.
Disappeared.
You know, that happens sometimes.
He made us all feel old, so now he's disappeared.
That opening comment, I, I didn't prep him on that, I probably.
I, I mean, Todd, come on.
I didn't. I had no idea I was coming in. I think he sat there for so long, he came up with that.
But when we're here, you guys beat Moses.
He needed an opening line. Oh, he's coming back. He's coming back.
We're getting him.
You got me too now.
Mister Martins, you joined us. All right, you hang in there, Mister Martins. We got plenty of application for, for you.
And the section of, and just while we're waiting, oh, he's back. The section is code about sidewalks, about payments, say shall. So, I, the governing body waiver makes sense because it says the shall type.
Jimmy, you're muted.
Mister Higgins?
Well, here we go. Let's see if we can do it this time now.
You are at A R E two.
Okay, yep, it's A R E two, um, and the site actually has D one variance approval. For the mixed use of the site, the residential use and the, uh, industrial use of the site. And it's an unusual seat, uh, usual D two variants. That is being requested here because the applicant is not actually not increasing the intensity of the use. He's actually decreasing the intensity of the use. He's reducing the amount of the non-residential use of the industrial use by approximately a thousand square feet. So, I, in that regard, I think it's a substantial improvement. It brings the site more into harmony with what was intended. By the ordinance that it be a, a residential and agricultural area. The new building that's being proposed, half of that building is going to be for the light industrial use. And again, it's about a thousand square feet less than what currently exists. And the other half is going to be in support of both the residential and the agricultural use of the site. So I think, again, that's an improvement. It helps bring the site more into conformity with, with the intent of the ordinance with regard. To utilizing the site for residential and agricultural purposes. So I think that there are substantial positive reasons, substantial special reasons. For the granting of the variance in that regard. I don't see any substantial negative impact. There are a number of. Bulk variances, C variances that are necessary. They've been discussed. Uh, quite extensively, and the applicant has agreed to try and mitigate as many of those as possible, particularly with regard to the landscaping. And again, those are existing conditions which are being reduced, in my opinion, in terms of the impact on the surrounding area and the impact on the ordinance. So I think those variances can also be granted. So when I look at this, I think there's a substantial improvement in terms of special reasons. And in terms of positive reasons for the C variances and no substantial negative impact that's being created by this application. The new building is going to be very attractive. As compared to the building that's there now, which quite frankly is ugly. And I think it's a detriment to the area. The new building's going to be a positive addition to the area. The landscaping that's, is proposed on the plan and that has been agreed to be supplemented by the applicant, I think is going to be a substantial improvement to the site too. So when I look at everything, I think it's a win-win situation. I think there are special reasons. Uh, for the granting of the variance and I don't see any substantial negative impact.
Thank you, Mister Higgins.
Thank you.
Chris, Christine?
Um, I would agree with Mister Higgins' testimony. I do think, uh. This is, um, there are. No negative impacts to the proposed development and it is kind of a, a tricky D two situation that, um, the overall density is decreasing, but. Just the way the wording of the variance is, um, it's an expansion of a non-conforming use. Um, it is promoting, uh, agricultural uses in the zone by, uh. Uh, dedicating that portion of the new building to that, and I think overall it's a. Good application. The applicant has responded, listened to, um, a lot of our issues and responded to them positively.
Thank you, Christine. Fellow board members, anyone have questions for, um, Mister Higgins?
Oh, sorry.
Nope.
Okay, um. I think we, uh. Mister Rubell. Where are you?
He left too.
Eileen, you gotta bring Michael back in, please.
He's coming back in the meeting.
He was there.
There he is.
Hi, yeah, I got, I got kicked to an attendee.
Uh. Okay, Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, nothing at this time, Mister Chair.
Okay. Well, um, you know, Mister Cohen?
Yes, Mister Chairman, that, that pretty much concludes our presentation. If there's, uh, any more questions, obviously we'd be happy to take them. Uh, but that, that, that completes our, uh, our situation.
Thank you, sir. So my fellow board members here, you got it. Uh, you don't have any other further questions? So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mister Chairman, you need to open to the public.
Oh, we gotta open the public one more time.
On the, yeah, on the planner's testimony.
On the planner's testimony, thank you.
And any comments to public too, you could do, I guess.
Yeah, and Mister Chair, before you do that, if I could just make a, or ask one quick question to Mister Higgins. So I know he said. The building half is going to be used for personal for the residents and half for the commercials, so the driveway, uh, along the south side of the new building, that's the. There's like a twelve-foot wide gravel driveway. That's just for the residential access. For the building?
Yeah.
I am not sure. I think Mister Falcon can answer that, or the applicant can answer that better than I can.
That's correct, Charlie.
So just to make it clean for the board, Todd, with the applicant, be willing to like a restriction that the southernmost driveway is just, just for residential purposes, farming purposes of the property. Just so that way, you know, if the property changes hand in the future, you know, we're not getting, you know, commercial vehicles coming in and out of that driveway, you know. Into the neighbors driveway, you know, property across the street.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay. That's all I have, Mister Chair.
Thank you, sir. Fellow board members, can we have a motion to open the public, please?
Motion to open the public, Mister Chair.
Do you? Second, we got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're opening it back up to public. It looks like, um. We have Mister. Getmanoff, that one that had his hand raised. I don't know if he still does. Eileen, we're opening to public.
The meeting will now be open to the public. If you're calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Mister Getmanoff?
Yes, sir.
You, uh. You had your hand raised. Do you have?
I had one question.
For the planner or a question? Go ahead.
All right, it was concerning the sidewalks. Where do we end up with that?
Well. You know, Mister Cohen?
Mister Gavinoff, unfortunately, the way the township ordinance is written, my client can only request a waiver of the sidewalk or put them in. If he likes not to put them in, which he does, because it doesn't make any sense to put them in, he must pay the sidewalk fund. Which will come out to about fourteen Gs, unfortunately. But he does have the option, um, to go to the council and request a waiver, which we will, but. I don't know how that's going to go, but we'll try.
Well, I hope it works in your favor, because it'll be in our favor too, because no one has sidewalks here.
Now, we're not going to put, we're, we're, we, the board, I think, is.
Yeah.
Of the mind to grant the waiver, but. My client has no option with regard to the order.
You can go a mile in either direction and you won't find a sidewalk. You know.
Appreciate that.
It's just, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense. And I certainly don't want one in front of my house, leading to nowhere.
Okay, we're not proposing to build a sidewalk.
All right, well, I hope it works out in your favor.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Eileen, anybody else?
There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay. Fellow board members, can I have a motion to close the public?
Make a motion, close the public.
They're ready.
Second.
Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Mister Cohen, you, you could have concluded your.
Yes, we've included our testimony. That's correct, Mister.
So then fellow board members, uh, professionals, any last. Words of wisdom or advice?
Nothing, Mister Chair.
Okay. So I leave it up to the board members. You know, what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mister Chair, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Uh, obviously we discussed a lot of things about the buffering and all that with, uh, Sherry and. Uh, straightening that out. Um, I. I'm not sure exactly where we, as a board stand on the sidewalk. I'm inclined to say that, you know, I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion to waive it. I know they have to go further with that. And I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mister Hughes, motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mister Chick. Whoop. I just stepped on somebody.
Mister Cantor, you second.
I'll second that, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Cantor. So we have an approval. A motion to approve and a second. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Cantor.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I, I would like to echo Mister Hughes on the support of a waiver. In front of the town council for the sidewalk, and I vote yes.
Be a little.
Mister Hughes?
Yes.
Mister Martins?
Abstain.
Okay. Mister Moretti?
I. Pro, approve it, but the, what, with the sidewalks, we, we must, uh, give them the. Uh, leeway not to have to put them in because it doesn't make sense. I approve it.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes, approve.
Mister Rubell?
Approved, and I also support the waiver, uh, not to put in a sidewalk.
And Chairman Sayah?
Well, first, um, I'd like to thank the applicant. You know. How Township is a very diverse. Low. Very diverse piece of. Uh, land that has a lot of history to it and, um, you know, the light industrial base is something that is near and dear to my heart and, uh, I am very pleased that. It is continuing to be represented here in How Township. So, you know, with all of the improvements that are being made and the concessions. For, you know, the buffering and so forth. Uh, I'd like to ask Mister Bear. To, that, you know, the board unanimously approves. Supporting the waiver on the sidewalks. If we can get, i- if, if a letter is appropriate.
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'll note it in the resolution saying it's required, but that you support a waiver.
Okay, and.
And then we'll, we'll forward that on to the clerk of the Township Council.
And Mister Getmanoff's, you know, observation, since he sits right across the street. I'm looking forward to him having a better architectural view than what he has right now. So yes, I have, I, I approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, board members. Thank you, professionals. It's, uh. Been a little long road, but I think we got to the place where we needed to get, and I think everybody's a lot happier because of that. And again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so. Eileen, we have, uh. Another board member for the next application that has joined us. And Mister Martins. So I believe we have a total of, uh, seven now? Yep. We're good.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, if I could just, uh, chime in real quick, I'm, apologize. I checked the agenda and it said. The next meeting was the nineteenth, so I had to work late tonight anyway, but I just wanted to let you know that was the only reason I missed the first part of it.
Thank you, sir.
I, I hope, yes, I hope I don't get in too much trouble for it.
No, we excuse you, sir. It's okay.
Well, Mister Martins, there is a meeting next week as well.
Yeah, I know about the nineteenth because I saw the agenda for that already, so I'm all ready for that.
Okay, so, uh, without taking a break. It's, it's, it's twenty thirty-two, that's eight thirty-two P M. Uh, I'd like to move forward unless anyone has to take a five minute. Not seeing or hearing, let's do it.
Believe it or not, I don't. I normally do and I don't.
Okay, not seeing anyone, but here we go. Case number B A twenty. Dash one zero seven S P. This is the three sixty-six. Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. They're here in front of us for a preliminary and final major site plan. The application of three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road LLC is applicant and owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. For an addition of an existing. For an addition to the existing seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-five square foot masonry warehouse office building. The proposed site improvements include the removal and relocation of the existing site access drive. To no longer be located within the regulated wetland buffers. Installation of a circulation drive aisles throughout the site, which provides access. To the twenty proposed parking spaces, four truck loading spaces. And three above-ground stormwater management basins. The application was before the board in twenty twenty-one and we was granted a use variance and bulk variance appro. and bulk variance approval at the time. The approval was conditioned on the applicant filing an application for preliminary and fight final site major site plan with the as well as other conditions on premises known as block three, lot twenty-nine, three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road. So um Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So let's see it. A little recollection on this one, right? This is the uh this one hat was a little tough uh to work with. This is the one that has the hill, correct?
Yeah, this is on uh Ramtown Greenville Road. It's just north of, I think it's uh County Stream uh Bridge and Stream Crossing. I think it's muddy Ford Brook.
Right.
Yeah, there's uh environmental, you know, restrictions associated with muddy Ford Brook, a three hundred foot riparian buffer, hundred fifty foot wetlands. Uh as part of the use variance application, the applicant um did a lot of environmental due diligence with the use variance application and put certain representations on the board on where they were with with their uh conversations and and permit process with D E P um.
And then Charlie, also, I believe on the back end of this property, you know, not on the Ramtown Greenville side, on the other side, there was a a resident or two that said they were they were flooding during stormwater. And uh and we were talking about being able to maybe um, you know, the stormwater management would help improve that situation, since the township engineers who have been out there have not been able to resolve the problem, and they got puddles in their backyard. Does that sound right?
So I can't speak specifically to uh the, I think you're talking about the development behind this, which I believe might be associated with Michelle Boulevard. Uh, any like ongoing issues with stormwater management basins as part of that development, I I wouldn't be able to speak to, but as far as the subject property, um, you know, the application as or the property as is existing doesn't have any stormwater management infrastructure the as part of the use variance application, and I'll let Mr. The applicant's attorney, Mr. Pape uh talk about this some more. They did do a full stormwater management design, I believe, in accordance with the new stormwater management rules that were coming into effect uh in March of two thousand twenty-one, knowing that their site plan application was gonna be filed after the stormwater rules had changed. So um, you know, I think at the time of the use variance, their stormwater management design was like, you know, a fully contemplated and designed stormwater management design. It wasn't just a conceptual footprint on a plan, but I'll I'll let Mr. Pape and his professionals provide more testimony on that.
Thank you, Charlie. We'll keep an eye on that. Thank you. Okay, M- Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, good evening all. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of your applicant, three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. As read into the record, Mr. Chair, this is the the request for site plan approval. The applicant um spent May, June, and August with this board in two thousand twenty-one. And at that time, the applicant presented more than a use variance plan as I think, taking Mr. Cundliff's comment that the stormwater plan was far more than just a conceptual use variant stormwater system. In fact, we spent a considerable amount of time uh working on all of the details of stormwater, knowing how important it was. We also spent a good deal of time talking about the environmental issues and agreed to be responsible for securing certain approvals and permits from the this D E P. We agreed to go to the Environmental Commission. We agreed to spend more time with Chief Lewis. Um, and we we we've we've I'm very pleased to tell you that the applicant's team has done all of that, and tonight we're looking forward to present to you the evolution of the plan um with a with, I'll I'll begin with and I'll end with this evening. Our commitment to this board was memorialized in the use variance. It contained considerable per- con- conditions, and we're prepared to honor each and every one of those. Um, I had a couple of couple of substantive opening remarks that I'd like to place on the record, and then with permission, we'll go right to Charles Samonte, who is the design engineer, to go through the site elements and then go through the balance of the professionals. If we could, though, Mr. Chair, if Mr. Bayer could confirm receipt of our notices and confirm that the board has jurisdiction to hear us this evening.
The board has jurisdiction, Mr. Pape.
Thank you. Couple of, couple of co- comments. There's in the staff reports, it points out that we have wall signs and a monument sign that creates a variance. We don't have any need for wall signs. We remove any request for wall signs on the building. Uh, there's a monument sign that's there now. You're going to hear that the location of that sign, uh, the size of that sign, the height of the sign are are more than adequate. You're gonna hear our architect offer to bring out the architectural elements that he's added to the building out to that sign, but in all other respects, it'd be exactly the same monument sign. You'll hear that we're uh um in June, I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Spiro. We went through her May report. You'll hear that the applicant is more than willing to comply fully with the recommendations of Ms. Spiro with two uh two exceptions. One, we can't relocate the driveway. Uh uh the D E P approvals and permits pretty much locked in where the driveway is. So two B is something that we couldn't address in Ms. Spiro's report. And also, we had asked Ms. Spiro if we could take all the landscaping that would have gone in the parking lot on islands in the parking lot and asked if we could put that landscaping around the perimeter of the site. We'd rather not have trees in a parking lot where we have trucks coming and going. You'll also hear that the architectural design that was worked out at the time of the architectural design that was worked out with this board and Jennifer, and which was memorialized in the resolution, as Ms. Beam actually saying that it was a good design and that she found it was compliant with the requirements of the ordinance. You'll hear that we preserved all of that detail, and Mr. Steve Redasty will present it. Very briefly, Dr. Walker, with the environmental scientist who led us through the D E P permitting, you'll recall the complexity of the D E P permitting. He led us through that. Uh, he has provided copies of all the D E P approvals and permits that uh were required. They're all in hand, and they're now in the town's files. Lastly, if necessary, and I'll turn to Mr. Cundliff on this. Mr. Portnoy, Joseph Portnoy, who is the drainage uh engineer on this project. It's my under- if there's any further questions of Mr. Portnoy, he's available, but it is my understanding that Charlie and Mr. Portnoy have been in contact working out what I think are the final details. Too long an opening statement, for which I apologize. I'll tell you, I'm sitting and watching Todd Cohen, who to me is the coolest person I know, and knowing that I have to follow Todd Cohen for the last hour and fifteen minutes leaves me a little jittery. I I I'm a little stiff. I'm not cool. Um, and and knowing that I have to follow him is not easy, but with that, Mr. Chair, if we could bring on, if we could bring.
Mr. Pape, before you do, the only thing we should acknowledge for the record and for the board, there is litigation challenging the use variance approval pending in the Superior Court. And so clearly, this, I mean, you're the applicant here is proceeding at their own risk if the court over, you know, uh reverses the award of the use variance uh by the zoning board.
I appreciate, Mr. Bear, yes, there is outstanding litigation that was brought against both the board and the applicant. It is not yet resolved. We filed the site plan application. We actually inquired through your counsel. We did not want to be in front of the board at any time that the board would be uncomfortable proceeding. Um, we received permission to proceed. We appreciate that. We fully acknowledge that there'll be no site development at all unless and until the litigation is resolved in our client's favor. Then, thank you for the opportunity to put that on my record.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
So the persons who are part of the team to Eileen are Charles Samonte, John Ray, Steve Redasty, Ray Walker, and Joseph Portnoy. Could we allow all of them in?
Sure.
Charles Samonte, John Ray, Steve Redasty, Ray Walker, Joseph Portnoy.
Mr. Pape?
Yes.
So you I heard you mention that D E P did not approve the relocation of the ingress egress, is that?
Oh, no, oh, no, the the driveway is, we're removing the driveway as promised, but we can't move. Shari had actually asked us to see if we could further locate or relocate our driveway to avoid the the um taking down the spruce tree. That we couldn't do.
Okay.
The permits as issued are are pretty, or they're all in and they're all locked down. But removing that driveway part of.
Mr. Paper, are we missing anybody?
Steve, John, Ray, Charles, Joseph. Is is Joseph with us, Dr. Walker? Joseph Portnoy?
I believe he is.
Yes, he's coming in the meeting now.
Yeah, thank you.
You are.
Our client is also with us. That's uh um but I we we I'm not asking that our client be be brought in. If if we get to a point, we I'll ask you to bring Mr. Stefanski in. So with your, Mr. Chair, may we begin?
You may begin, sir. You're gonna have your professionals all sworn in.
Great.
By by Mr. Bear, please.
Um, everyone, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you gave will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do. Thank you.
Can you please uh, I guess, in trying to see, at least in the order, I see you, Mr. Samonte. So state your name, spell your last. You're muted.
Charles Surmont, S U R M O N T E.
Mr. Walker.
Uh Raymond Walker, W A L K E R.
Mr. Ray.
John Ray, R E A.
Mr. Portnoy.
Joseph Portnoy, P O R T N O Y.
And Mr. Redo.
Steve Redasty, R A D O S T I.
Uh witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Pape.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Chair and Counselor, Mr. Surmont, Dr. Walker, John Ray, and Steve Redasty all testified and as experts at the time of the use variance. Do their credentials carry forward, or do you wish to have them on the record this evening?
Mr. Bear?
You if they were qualified by the board in this related matter, I don't think you need to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, but yet Mr. Portnoy has not.
That's correct. So if 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 Mr. Portnoy's testimony becomes necessary this evening, we'll share with you his credentials before his testimony. Thank you for that clarification unforeseen. Mr. Surmont, if you could, and if can you do this, or do you need Eileen to assist you to to put your, the colored rendering that you prepared for the site? Can you and put that up on the screen, or do we want to ask Eileen to do it?
I'm hoping Eileen can do that.
Ms. Kusa, can you put the colored rendering site plan up, the one that we talked about earlier this evening?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. It's just doing the here and the far. Thank you so much. So this, this is a plan that was prepared. Mr. Uh Surmont, if you could confirm, this is a plan that your office prepared for this site?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask if you could um confirm that the the site plan that you have developed remains consistent with all of the commitments that were made to the board as shown on this plan.
Yes, I can confirm that.
Okay. If you could, I'm gonna ask if you could take us through just a first, I'm gonna call it a refresher, a refresher for all the board members as to what it was that was approved in the use variance. And then I'd like to go through some of the grading and drainage, landscaping and lighting uh with you. Could you give us an executive overview of what was approved at the use variance?
Uh, what was approved that uh during the use variance uh application was the proposed building expansion, which is depicted in the darker brown. The uh the tan building is the existing building. Um, the tan, uh, the the dark brown is made up of a breezeway of about sixteen hundred square feet, connecting the existing building to the proposed warehouse building, warehouse being about twenty thousand square feet. Um, the existing building previously or currently is being served by the the driveway in gray toward the upper left-hand portion of the site. Uh, that's the, that's the, yeah, there you go. That's the existing driveway that's to be removed under the new application and to be replaced by the driveway further to the southeast, running up and along the existing uh building. Um, and beyond the existing bill, well, yeah, up front, we are, the the there is one change to this rendering is that we're showing right now four parking spaces up by the uh existing building. Uh, the the new site plan incorporates two additional spaces um to serve the office building. Uh, they're just not shown on this rendering, but they're they're shown up in that in that general area. Um, yeah, they would be very good. They would be down into the left from where the arrow is right now.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the board, that was a requirement of the use variance approval. The applicant had made a agreement that they would add two additional parking spaces to the site plan when they came back for site plan. So that's that's where those two spaces are coming from.
Thank you, Charlie.
That's correct, and we've proposed a walkway and stairs to to access the building from those two spaces. Um, and then beyond that, those six parking spaces up front uh and beyond the existing building is the proposed loading area, which is made up of four full-depth loading dock spaces backed into the uh backed into the breezeway that I uh mentioned earlier. Um, and then beyond that area would be a total of sixteen parking spaces along the face of the proposed warehouse. Uh, primarily to serve the warehouse, but but also to provide a couple additional spaces for the office use up front that can't be provided due to this, the uh constraints of the site up front. We are proposing a thirty-foot-wide drive aisle all the way through the site from the street all the way to the back warehouse, back of the warehouse, and then providing uh both a turnaround and an access aisle for emergency vehicles to uh be able to serve that side of the building. Um, we have uh three bio-retention basins, two up uh two up top, up by the proposed warehouse. Uh, they will uh treat the stormwater associated mainly with that back half of the project. Then those basins will drain into the lower basin downtime down by Ramtown Greenville Road that will also collect the water from the uh lower portion of the site. We're maintaining the the, you know, if you want me to go into this, Ken, there's a there's a a fifty-foot buffer requirement along the rear property line that's being maintained. Then the property slopes down into the bio-retention basin three. There's a pretty steep slope there of about uh ten to twelve feet from the back of the uh from the rear buffer down to the retention basin.
I think Mr. Surmont, that that's a good executive overview to refresh the board as to what the applicant is proposing. I'd like to go through some of the specific elements briefly, but just to confirm that these been have been addressed.
Sure.
You had a grading concept plan at the time of use variance. Have you maintained that grading plan in the in the plan that's before the board?
Yes, we have.
You had made a commitment that there would be a modern stormwater system. There's no stormwater system now, that there would be a modern stormwater system, that it would be fully compliant with the state's two thousand twenty-one requirements, as well as the township's requirements, that it would be privately owned and no burden on the town, and I think we have to add something to it, and there'll be an operations and maintenance manual recorded as a lien against the property to, in perpetuity, make certain that the owner knows the requirements of maintenance. Did you follow all of that?
With Mr. Portnoy's assistance, yes, we have.
And there's a re- we also had a requirement to meet with the Environmental Commission to make certain that the environmental, that all of the commitments that we had made to to the Environmental Commission prior to coming to the board for use variance relief, we made a commitment to meet again with the Environmental Commissions so that they could review the plan and that they could confirm that all of the commitments we made were now part of the plan. And in fact, And in fact, that meeting took place this past winter. And are all of the commitments that were made to the environmental commission, all of the protections, part of this plan?
Yes, they are.
We also met with the fire chief on more than one occasion to make certain that he was comfortable with the plan. The board may, may note, in the staff's report, they point out that there is a water tower that's located the rear of the property. And that water tower is falling apart. That water tower was the firefighting water supply for the original building when there was no water supply here. Fire chief was comfortable with the abandonment of that water tower because our clients had brought water to the site. And as you'll hear from Mr. Radasti, the buildings will be fully suppressed. But if you could confirm that the onsite circulation that is shown here is consistent with Fire Chief Lewis's requests?
It is.
I'm gonna ask if you could, with regard to landscaping, we have a report that was issued by Ms. Spiro in May. And after the meet, after the report was issued, Ms. Spiro was generous with her time and, and met with us at her offices to go over that report. Going to, as I indicated in my opening remarks, that report dated May eighteenth. At paragraph two B, indicates a request to see if we could shift the basin access drive. You heard me in my opening statement saying that that would not be consistent with the DEP permits received. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, and, and unfortunately, the, the location chosen for the basin access drive is, is the only location whereby we could actually create a basin access drive. The other areas around the basin are either too, too tight to the driveway or too steep in grade to, to provide a, an access drive at a, at a acceptable slope. So we're, we're unfortunately, that is the only, that is the only viable location for the access drive.
I'm looking at Ms. Spiro's report, and one of the things that is brought to our attention is that trees and shrubs should be included in the parking lot. You heard in my opening remarks that we would prefer to take all the trees and shrubs, the numerical count, the size, all of those, and move them around the perimeter of the site so that our parking lot is, does not have trees and landscaping to create obstacles for the truck traffic. Are you comfortable advising the board that you can and will relocate all of that landscaping to the perimeter of the site if the board gave us that permission?
We could, yes.
So then I'm going to, to Mr. Chair and board members. We accept all of the guidance and recommendation that appears in Ms. Spiro's report of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Other than that paragraph two B dealing with the driveway location and with the request that we be permitted to take our parking lot landscaping and plant it elsewhere on site. I'd ask Mr. Surmont, would you confirm that prior to any request for a waiver for permission to make a contribution to the shade tree fund that you will revisit this site and maximize in all places perimeter landscaping, drainage basin landscaping, and replacement landscaping towards the goal of, of reducing, if not of fully eliminating the requirement of a cash contribution?
Yes, I can, I can certainly make that representation.
With regard to the stormwater comments that appear in Mr. in, in the T N M report issued on April thirteenth, they appear in paragraphs seven, eight, and nine. It's my understanding that both your office and Joseph Portnoy have been working on addressing those requirements. Are you comfortable advising the board that your office and Mr. Portnoy can and will address all of the drainage comments that are in Mr.
Yes, absolutely. They, they, they pretty much already have been, but to the extent that they haven't, we will.
Mr. Conliff, if it's not out of line at this point, could I ask you to comment on your satisfaction of what's been done to date?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, I spoke with Mr. Portnoy earlier this afternoon. Some of the comments in my letter were erroneous in the sense that there was information that was provided in the stormwater management report, just the location of where it was provided wasn't you know, clear for me to, to find, and we discussed those items. Some of the items regarding mounding, you know, elevation of orifices, I asked the applicant to draw out a copy of their outside agency approvals from DEP for the flood hazard area, the general permits for the wetlands, transition area, ever waiver buffering. DEP also, as part of their permit review process, also reviews the stormwater management. The permits that the applicant has obtained and provided to the board reflect the, the site plans that are presented to the board. So any of the outstanding stormwater comments in my letter, I'm, I'm confident that Mr. Point or Portnoy and Mr. Surmonte can address as a condition of approval. A lot of them have to do with, you know, adding notes to the plan on over excavation of any, should there be any restrictive soils that are encountered during construction will be, you know, excavated and replaced with suitably draining soils, things of that nature. And then I just want to point out for the board's perspective with the rendering that's depicted on the, on the screen right now. Chad, this is what was presented to the board at the time of the, the use variants, right? So the two basins in the rear, although they're called bio-retention basins on the current site plan, those are infiltration basins, which is still green infrastructure. It's just, it's a sand bottom versus plantings, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Yep, Mr. Chair.
Those two in the back are what, twenty-year, thirty, fifty-year flood line?
So everything is sized for the, for the DEP stormwater regulations. It's NJAC seven, semicolon eight, which is also part of the township stormwater control ordinance. So they're required to attenuate the two, the ten, the hundred-year storm to meet required reductions. They're also required to provide groundwater recharge with, you know, green infrastructure that has an infiltration component. So all three basins that the applicant's proposing, the lower one that's shown on the left-hand portion of the screen here is a bio-retention basin. So that has soil media plantings within it that, you know, soak up soils and nutrients. So it's not getting discharged to a downstream water body. The two basins on the right-hand side are sand infiltration basins. So you're getting a recharge with the infiltration. You're also getting water quality because your fit is set higher than a water quality storm. So, so you're getting your water quality, you're getting your groundwater recharge, and you're also getting your quantity control, your attenuation. You know, as are required per DEP and our rules. So like I said, I think I put a testimony on the record from the board's perspective with regards to what was presented to the board at the time of use variants. That it was a, you know, pretty much fully designed stormwater management design at that time. The applicant is, obviously took the additional step of getting their DEP permits with this application. And, you know, the comments that are in my letter are clarification items, you know, to be added to a plan to protect the township. You know, to make sure that everything gets built, you know, that no unforeseen conditions, you know, occur and, and, and can be handled, you know, when this goes to construction.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
And, and as mentioned by Charlie, the DEP permits are in hand. It's my understanding that earlier today, Joseph Portnoy assembled all the DEP permits and delivered them to Mr. Conliff. But Mr. Surmont, I'm gonna ask if you'd confirm all the DEP approvals and permits that were discussed at use variants are in hand, they're not outstanding anymore, they're in hand, and they've been made part of the file at the township?
Yes, they have been.
And I think we go two steps further. You have freehold soil conservation certification for your plans, isn't that correct?
We do.
And you have a conditional county approval. And I'm gonna say there's some technical requirements that we wanted to address after completing the presentation to the town. But the county planning board has also granted a conditional site plan approval.
They have.
And your water service was brought by our client to the site before the application process began. And you've made application to the township for sewer connection for our client's property, correct?
We have, yes.
So all of those outside agencies that we committed to having in hand are in place. Like making the inaccurate statement?
It is. Well, the, the sewer, the sewer approval is, is preliminary, but once we get past this step, we'll move on to, to the, the final approval stage.
Ken, can I, can I, sorry, I don't want to cut you off. I just want to ask a couple clarifying questions because there were some comments regarding some of the outside agency stuff. So I think you said that you met with the environmental commission over the winter.
We did.
I'm looking at their, unless I'm missing something subsequently that was issued, but the last memo I have from them is March ninth, twenty twenty-two. So did you meet with them after that?
I think that's when we were, it was the month of, pretty sure it was the month of March that we went. There was a, a full, a full environmental commission and it was a live meeting. They, like, my notes indicate they thanked us for, for taking all of their comments to the board at the time of use variants and acknowledge that we had incorporated them into their plan.
Okay, and, and then as far as, I think Mr. Tomonte talked about the fire bureau met with the site circulation. So their latest memo just asked that obviously the site be designed to have fire lane, striping and signage. And I just want to point out for the board's reference and, and just recollection that at the time of the use, the applicant did agree to seek Title Thirty-nine enforcement from the governing body on this property. So I had a comment in my letter, if you're looking at the rendering on the plan here, there's the two turnaround areas at the, it's on the right-hand side of the plan here.
Yep.
I, I just want to make sure that those are adequately striped with fire lane, striping and signage, and that Title Thirty-nine is adopted. So that way, you know, those spaces are just for turnaround emergency purposes. It's not, you know, overflow parking or anything like that. And if it is, you know, that the municipality has the ability to enforce that, so.
I, I know that thi- this learning board understands, but for all listening, Title Thirty-nine is the statute that includes all the laws of traffic control. The Title Thirty-nine applies to all public roadways, and on application to the governing body, it can apply to private property. So we're asking that the police be permitted and authorized to enforce Title Thirty-nine on our property for all of the purposes that, that Charlie just placed on the record. We agree to that.
So, and Ken, I'll let you continue with Chad, but I'll have some questions at the very end of his testimony.
Okay, thank you. So we also had a, made a commitment to widen the shoulder in the roadway along Ramtown Greenville Road. Mr. Surmont, if you could confirm that you made those improvements to the plan?
Yes.
We agreed to install curbing and along the roadway, and those improvements have been made.
Yes.
And it appears that we didn't discuss sidewalks at the time of use variants. And I can hear Jennifer Beam, even though she's not here this evening, saying somebody has to go first. So we're prepared to install sidewalks along our frontage. We'll be the one that goes first. I indicated that we, we'll, if you could, Mr. Surmont, there's one of your sheets that shows the existing wooden sign alongside the driveway. If we could get that sheet up.
It's actually on the plan you have, any of the plan, I think it's shown on all the plans.
Yeah, okay, help me.
Help you if you, if you go, if you go to the word Ramtown and Ramtown Greenville Road. And just come up into the property from there, right next to New Jersey American Water Easement.
Right there.
This existing sign.
So there's an existing sign that is there. We propose that the size of the sign, the location of the sign, the, the sign board and the height of the sign all be preserved, but you'll hear a little bit later, Steve Radasti would like to bring his architectural treatment from the building down to that sign.
Okay.
Mr. Surmont, you have seen the staff report generated by T N M dated August thirteenth. There's considerable technical guidance in that report. If you have any problem advising the board, that you can and you will comply with the technical requests made by Mr. Conliff in that report.
Yes, we, we can and will comply.
You already spoke to Ms. Ms. Sherri Spiro's letter of May eighteenth. I'm not certain, and I returned to Ms. Bell, I'm not certain whether there's anything in your letter of September seventh that you'd like to hear Mr. Surmont's address.
I don't think there's anything in particular for him.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think so either. Mr. Chair, that concludes the direct presentation of Mr. Surmont. And he is available to you and your board, again, members and professionals for examination.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I just want to go back, a couple items that were deferred during the use variants to the site plan approval. Written descriptions of easement, so the applicant agreed to provide a site triangle driveway easement, site triangle easement at the site driveway. And then also sanitary sewer easement, should it be required by the utility for their lateral connection to the existing sanitary. I think it's along the, is that the northerly property line? I can't see the north there on the plan there. So we just asked that that be made a condition of the site plan approval. We talked about the Title Thirty-nine being need to be sought from the governing body. Lighting intensity, they do need a waiver for that. Can the lighting plan be put up on the? On the screen?
Yeah, we need to see that, Charlie.
Yeah, because I know that was a question from, you know, members of the public on what the lighting was gonna look like. Because that wasn't one of the exhibits for the use variants. See, that would be. I think it's sheet twelve of the plan. I could put it up. It's probably easiest. Yeah, so this is sheet twelve of the applicant's site plan. Mr., so they do need a waiver, our, our ordinance, obviously, it, it, it requires a minimum of, I think, point-three-foot candles anywhere in a parking area, but a maximum average of point-five-foot candles, which is not a very large spread of, of room for lighting. Mr. Samati, this is your site plan, correct?
Yes.
And so is your represented, representation that all lighting, obviously, it's LED pole-mounted for the driveways. There's some security lighting along the north, or I guess the east side of the building. But all that lighting will be downward facing, no more than three thousand Kelvin color temperature, house side shields, things of that nature.
Yes.
And no, and no direction towards adjacent residential properties?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Another.
Just in the front, that's also in the back, correct, Charlie?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and, and Chad, is there any way that this building-mounted lighting here could just be maybe pole-mounted and directed towards the building and get the same effect? So that way it's pointing towards the building and not, you know, towards the rear? Can that be accommodated?
I think it's an excellent idea, Mr. Sam.
I think so. I don't see why not. Maybe I'm, I'm just looking at the back end of the building. The south face of the building.
You know, I know you do have your basin here, but you do have, I think, some like a gravel strip for water quality where you might be able to put the two foundations, I think, facing towards the building and not to adjacent residential properties would be a beneficial thing for this application.
Right, so those two type B building-mounted lights could be replaced by pole-mounted adjacent to basin three.
And facing towards the building, right? Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Say that again?
Just Chad, if you could confirm back shields on those lights?
Okay, yes.
So, and then another comment I had in my letter. So our parking ordinance requires a minimum space of nine feet by nineteen-foot depth. There wasn't a dimension on the use variants plan for these spaces here. I think they're dimensioned at eighteen-foot depth now, so you need technically a waiver from that. Is there any way that the site can be reconfigured, or maybe we could lose, you know, a foot on the building, you know, to comply with that requirement to eliminate the waiver?
Well, we could. I, I, I always, I always feel parking stall depth is also a function of aisle depth. You'll note in the front, we only have a twenty-four-foot-deep aisle, and in that area, we're proposing, I believe, twenty-foot-deep stalls. Where the stalls are eighteen feet, which are the ones against the warehouse, we have a thirty-foot-deep aisle behind them. So I, I, I just, I just feel that with that aisle depth and the fact that, you know, typically large cars are no more than fifteen to sixteen feet in depth, that. Typically, large cars are no more than fifteen to sixteen feet in depth that, that they could be received comfortably in that eighteen foot stall. And would have enough, obviously more than enough room to, uh, to maneuver in that thirty foot aisle behind them. But yes, if the stall were required to be nineteen feet, the aisle is required to be thirty feet per the. Um, per the fire marshal, the only alternative would be to take a foot out of the building, but I feel as though the. The eighteen foot stalls in that circumstance are, are adequate depth.
Yeah, but, but, but Charlie?
Yep.
That would reduce, remove one variance requirement, correct?
Yeah, and it's, and it's a waiver. It's a design waiver. It's not, it's not a variance. So it's just the standard for parking spaces. So. It, it would eliminate that, that waiver. And then just from a functional perspective. You know, I've seen a lot of buildings where parking immediately abuts the building with curb stops and, uh, you know. Not that someone's going to drive perpendicular into the space at fifty miles an hour, but, uh, you know, an added foot of buffer, you know. May prevent any vehicle overhanging from driving into the side of your building. It's just something for the applicant. One, it eliminates the waiver and it, you know, from a functional perspective, it has some purpose to it too.
Well, I think we'd like to eliminate the waiver then.
And, and we're talking one foot by, uh, two hundred and sixty foot. Length of the building, so it's two hundred and sixty square feet plus or minus, I want to say. So, you know, we're not talking about a massive. Loss of functional, you know, space of the building, if that were to be accommodated.
Um, it's, it is clear from the engineer and the chairman's comments as to the preference of the board. We will always defer to the preference of the board.
Uh, and then they keep going, uh. So the stormwater, I, I obviously talked about, uh, the discussion I had with Mister Portnoy. The one comment that I, I just did leave out was, um, I had a comment. And I'll just switch to the grading plan here, um, real briefly. So the applicant's stormwater management design, uh, for their driveway, everything that's runoff generated and pervious on the site. Is captured by stormwater management system, uh, along the site driveway. Obviously, anyone that's been down Ramtown Greenville Road and seen the existing site can see that there's a considerable amount of elevation change. Along the property frontage. There's a lot of, um, you know, existing scour along that frontage because there is no stormwater management. Uh, you know, they do have a drainage inlet here that's on the low end of the driveway. I had a comment about adding a trench drain across that driveway. I'm, I'm usually not. Um, you know, a big proponent of that, but I think in this instance with how steep the driveway is. I think that's just an added factor of safety to make sure that, you know, no runoff from the site driveway is bad bypassing the stormwater management system. Um, I had spoken with Mister Portnoy, he indicated that that could be provided. Chad, you guys can accommodate that?
Yes, I noticed that as well.
Okay, and then, uh, I had a comment in here, um, about the fencing for the basins. Uh, typically, I know, I know the board kind of doesn't really always require the fencing around the basins. The one in the front, I think it needs to be required just given the height of the retaining walls around this basin here. Uh, I think those are chain link fence that's proposed. The two basins in the rear that are infiltration sand bottom basins, those have proposed just a standard post and rail fencing. Yeah, I'll defer to the board on whether or not you feel like that's absolutely needed for this site. Um, you know, it's really, uh, up to the board's, you know, preference on whether or not they want those in there or not. Um, and then, Ken, is Mister Walker going to talk about any like where the, the permits and everything like that, or is he going to give any testimony?
I was going to ask you if you, I mean, they're all in, they're all filed. Doctor Walker is available. He could go through them on the record if that's your preference.
No, so the, the one comment I did want to have, and it was, it was a big type, topic of discussion was, you know, obviously the applicant's going to get their outside permits. What's to prevent, you know, this applicant or future owner of the property from, you know, going in? I know the applicant is proposing to eliminate the encroachment into the regulated areas that was beat into how that was a positive for this application and things like that. And, uh, there was, I believe, an indication that they were going to provide conservation easement easing. That was required with the D P permit, that the fencing was going to be installed with the monumentation and all that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure that that's all going to be perfected. It just hasn't been done yet, cause, you know, you have to get the site plan approval, right?
Yeah, so the, the D E P permits are in hand. Conditions include creating, re- recording the permits and creating conservation easements over certain portions of the property. And in addition to the D E P requirements, the commitment that we had with this board. Is that we would physically in the field in, in, install monumentation. Beyond which there could be no further disturbance. And we'll, we'll repeat that, we'll repeat that and make it. If the board sees fit to grant the site plan, in addition to being a condition of the use variance, it'd be a condition of the site plan.
And, and just to clarify for the board, because we do have some new members and not everyone was around. So. There's the existing site driveway that's within, this is their landscaping plan sheet number eleven. That's within, uh, both, uh, three hundred foot repair and buffer for muddy floor brook, but also within the wetlands buffer associated with that. They were eliminating that to move their driveway outside of the, outside of the wetlands and into the outer one fifty of the repair and buffer. There was also this, uh, area that was being utilized by prior owner, I believe, for staging and storage. With the, which the applicant was going to eliminate all those improvements and replant it. So it was a matter of.
It was more, Charlie, it was more than just staging and storage.
Oh, it was.
It, it, it was horrible. And so, you know, it, to, to, to put a monument there and put that into the conservation easement, it was absolute.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, so Mister Pape, you know, we're not going to abandon that idea, right? I know, yeah, that, that entire, it's something, it was an impound yard that somebody had created with tall fences and, and stone. We don't know what it was. It, it was there, it was there when our clients purchased it. But we agreed to remove it and restore the entire area and to reforest it. Um, all that remains the commitment, all that.
So, and then the last comment that I have, uh, from Mister Samonte regarding the utilities. So I think there was a general note on the plan regarding the proposed. Uh, water and sewer demand for the uses on the property was broken down into. Office based off the square footage and then also, I think, the warehouse based off of the number of employees. Um, I know there was extensive testimony, even with growth, that the site as a total would have a maximum of twenty-two employees. I just want to make sure there's no change into that and that the calculation for sewer purposes is just for based off of. Um, like square footage that the applicant is not going to. You're designing for a maximum capacity with some like, you know, factor of safety, right? It's not like. We're coming in with forty-four employees. We, the system may be designed for forty-four employees because that's what the rules re- require, but. The applicant is still abiding by their maximum of twenty-two employees. That's, is that accurate?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Charlie, the. Part of the testimony of Steve Stefanski was that the maximum number of office employees and warehouse employees would be twenty-two. He also indicated that, um, the industry is going to a lesser number of employees, that it's becoming a more automated industry. So even if their business continues to be successful, they are comfortable that the twenty-two. The num- the employees at twenty-two is going to go down and not up just because of, because of the. The way the industry is evolving.
Gotcha. All right, and then the last, this is the last one for Chad. So I know the two parking spaces that we talked about being added, that was a condition of the use. I just ask, obviously, at time of building, you're going to need to get like any building permits for the stairs to make sure it has railings and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that'll be all that comment. Yeah, we'll, we'll detail that, that, that sidewalk from this, from the parking stall up to the building.
Okay. That's all I have right now, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Charlie. Mister Pape? Yeah, uh. For the new member on the board.
Yeah.
Uh, can you tell them what the industry usage is? Sure, is our client, um, purchases, um, food product, packaged food product. And then repackages it and distributes it to, throughout the central New Jersey area. To such persons, such, such companies as hospitals, Red Cross, uh, schools, uh, actually prisons. Um, but it's, it's, it's food product that is, um, bought in bulk and repackaged and distributed.
And Ken, just to clarify, right, everything, it's palletized in larger quantities and then it's just broken down into smaller quantities. It always is packaged. It's never, you're processing raw foods and then packaging it, correct?
No, well, yes, at the time of the use variance hearing, when Steve Stefanski testified in detail, he went through that. Those are accurate statements that Mister Conliff just put on the record.
Thanks.
Other, Mister Chair, I turn to you. Are there questions of board members or other professionals? Um, do you wish to open it to the public? Let me, uh, let me ask the board members, does anyone wish to ask any questions? Mister Rebel, do you have any questions?
Uh, what was the item with the, uh, the fences around the basins, I believe, uh, Mister Conliff asked, uh, for the board to, to rule? Matt, could you repeat that, um, that statement, Charlie?
Yes, so, uh, typically, uh, I know in like residential subdivisions and things like that. The board will require the basins to be fenced, you know, so you don't have, uh, you know. Children or people walk into a basin, you know, that's, that has two feet of water in it during a rain event and things like that. Uh, the basin at the front of the site is a bio retention basin, and because of the existing slope. Uh, coming off the site onto Ramtown Greenville Road, there's a series of tiered, uh, retaining walls as part of that construction. So there it was, you know, the applicant's proposing chain link fence around that, which I didn't take an issue with from a safety perspective. Cause I think it's required for, for building code because of the retaining wall heights. The two basins in the back are just sand infiltration basins. Uh, that don't have access to any other adjacent properties other than by the site driveway to Ramtown Greenville Road. They are proposing post and rail fencing around the basins, um, you know, really, does the board want a fencing? Do they think it's needed? You know, just an item of discussion. I take no issue with it, but, uh, I know sometimes in the past, the board's like. You know, why are we putting a fence around a basin when no one's going to be back there? So.
Except for the fact, Charlie, that if someone's backing up. Out of one of the eighteen, which is going now be nineteen foot long drive. They might wind up in the basin.
So what I would say to that is that is a great point. Uh, what I recommend in lieu of fencing is maybe, uh, timber or guide rail. Uh, to prevent that from happening. Um, I think that's going to hold up a little bit more substantially than, uh, you know, four foot high chain link fence. Uh, spaced at ten feet, so.
Right, that'll be crash rated, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, Chad. I agree, I, I second that. I agree with that. And, uh, for the front too, for the, uh, OSHA requirements. I, I definitely think it's prudent to have the, uh, fencing around the, um, retaining walls there.
Absolutely.
But I would be fine with the guardrail as you're speaking around the, the sand basins to the, um, right of the page.
Very fine. Mister Pape, you got that? Yeah, and, and I just heard Mister Samont say yes.
Well, just, just, I would think basin two behind the, behind the, uh.
I, I think both of you, Chad, I think basin two behind the parking stalls and then just along the. The, uh, westerly side of basin three, just, just running along the driveway aisle there, so that way no one, you know, inadvertently drives into it, I think is.
Okay.
Okay, Mister Roscoe?
Nope, no questions.
Mister Moretti?
No questions, sir.
Mister Cantor?
I'm sorry, I ask your indulgence. Um, in a couple of the exhibits that were attached. There's reports from the environmental commission and the farmers advisory council. Uh, Mister Pape, you stated that the environmental commission, uh, you met with them. And you've incorporated their recommendations into the final plan. What were their recommendations?
They wanted to, that, all of the D E P approvals and permits that we had promised, um, and to remove all of the encroachments. That were in the wetlands or in any of the environmentally sensitive properties. They also had some comments on the landscape materials that were to be used.
Okay, I saw, cause I saw something in there about endangered species. Is there, was there any, um, mention of that?
Well, I think, well, Dr. Walker got all of the D E P approvals and permits, the, the wetland approvals that were secured. Um, actually make reference to the charac- the characterization of the wetlands, and I think that the. Had, they would not have been issued if there were threatened or endangered species in the vicinity.
A- and I agree, and I think that protection of that area enhances that. And then the only other thing was the farmers advisory council, and we may have discussed this in two thousand and one, but. I, I believe it's a farm that's adjacent to your property, and there was a question about whether that would be a farmland buffer or a residential buffer. Between those two properties?
Yeah, I think that we have the full fifty foot, um, we, 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 we. If, if you could, this is a, need to, need to plan up to know where the North Arrow is, but this is the back corner where we have a, a horse farm. If you could confirm that.
Other, other end from the creek, the other side of the road from the, the other end of the property from where the creek is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, well, we're calling it a fifty foot residential and farmland buffer.
It's a full, it's fully dimensioned.
It's just that, that one minor encroachment of the existing building.
Yeah, I remember that, just a little.
Buffer.
The, the little part of it, but the rest of it is still, it's considered a farmland buffer.
Uh, yes, um, that's how we've designated. So I, I, someone must have brought to our attention that that adjacent property was a farm.
Yeah, that would be, um, our, our, our still chairman, actually. Mister Nansen probably insisted upon that. Thank you, Mister Pape.
You're welcome.
So, and Ken, to clarify for the board as well, right, the applicant has also made a representation tonight. That they're going to supplement the buffer and the perimeter to the maximum extent possible to try to minimize if they can or eliminate. Any true replacement contribution required, right? So any areas down here in the fifty foot buffer. Most of that buffer, I think, was to remain and be supplemented, but you know, you're going to enhance it even further, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's southerly buffer is a little thin. The, the easterly buffer is pretty healthy, but, uh, that's probably the area we'll focus most of the replanting.
And what, what, as you know, we'll focus under the guidance of Ms. Spiro. She'll, she'll show us where she wants us to do infill, and we'll, we'll do so. Mister Martin?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, a real quick question for the engineer. Where's the refuge located? Cause looking at the plan on the screen, it's really difficult to see exactly where the refuge is.
It's, um, opposite the.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
The corner, that northeast, that northwest corner of the proposed, there you go.
Okay, and that's going to be constructed as, uh, I know Jen isn't here tonight, but she's very particular about how the, uh, that. Those, uh, refuge areas are with the walls and everything.
Yes.
Masonry block, yeah.
Yes, okay. And, and the next thing is primarily. On this plan, looking at the rear of the buildings, are we, are those buildings facing north or east? Cause I do not see the North Arrow, so I'm not sure.
Uh, that's no, it's, it's.
Is it northeast? I mean, it's kind of confusing.
West, I think, uh, let me get my north. You get a little disoriented on Ramtown Greenville Road.
I know, I, I, I've, I've lived here and I know exactly what you're talking about, so that's.
There's the North.
We're going to call the, we're going to call the face of the proposed warehouse, so the, that would be the. That would be facing northwest.
Okay.
The, the face, oh, there you go, they have a North Arrow on that plan. Okay.
Okay. Okay, now I see it. Now, uh, Sherry, what are we putting in in the back as far as those screenings behind the buildings? Are they green giants, Lelands? Do you know?
Um, can you go back to that?
Right now, I'm showing white cedar.
Okay.
And.
Green giant.
Okay, it seems there's more concentrated on the one building closer to the road and then it kind of. Lightens up. That's why I was wondering if it was a different variety that would get bigger.
Nah, just that's where the buffer was a little thin.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll look at that, you know, I mean, it is thin on that side, but it's really thin because there's no understory. So we'll do the best we can, but you know, most of it is going to have to be planted on the edge.
But most of that's going to be facing, um, Money Creek Farm. It's not going to be as much of a concern to the people on the show. That's what I'm trying to get at as far as, okay.
Yeah, no.
Okay, and then last question, Sherry, do you think those plants will do okay? Cause they will probably get limited sun back there. Cause they will probably get limited sun back there.
Yeah, no, I, we do have to discuss the species selection some more, yeah. I I will probably have to change to some, at least some more shade tolerant trees like holly.
Okay.
What was it?
And from the uh, the, the, the screening plants, are there, is it gonna be grass back there or?
NJDP wanted me to change a lot of the species.
Okay.
We having um, have an issue with some of the selections?
Yeah, DEP did have some comments during the review process and did have a sa- change uh, some of the species. I think as a result, that's why we've uh, changed that uh, those to cedar in that uh, in that area.
Cedar won't, I mean, they need full sun.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm thinking the same thing. I mean, what, you know, they need to understand the sites and, you know, they.
I know, yeah, DEP will say, you know, green giants aren't needed, you have to put needums, but you know. If they can grow in this area.
Sherry, are we talking about the plantings on the east side of the building?
Yeah, right there on that buffer, right.
If I'm always thinking, I think that's outside of any of the regulated.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they would have.
I've seen this before. They'll comment on the whole plan and you know, sometimes I I don't, I have to say, I don't always agree with them. They they've said certain trees aren't native and they are, I I don't know. I don't know though, how much they, do they come out afterwards and check and make sure you put in what they requested? In these areas outside of their jurisdiction?
If it's outside of their jurisdiction, it's just a comment. It's it's not a requirement. We'll, we'll, we'll follow yours.
Okay.
I I, I think the important thing is if we're putting in something to screen it, we need to make sure it's the right variety. And I've seen this happen many times in my years in business where, you know, these plans are based on. You know, without thinking through what, how they're gonna grow over the years and that's.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as that's gonna be, you know, looked into, I I appreciate that. I'm sure Sherry will come up with something that will be sufficient. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir. Um, just for a point of clarification, I think I know the answer to this. When I'm looking at the, the color plan and this plan, I still see the old drive. Is that just there for like an existing condition or is that staying for some reason?
It's supposed to be removed.
Okay, so, yes. Okay, so that's a showing of existing. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And that, if approved, will become part of, and they were able to move forward with the conservation easement.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. I just, I I kind of figured it was, cause it was in yellow on the other plan. I just wanted to clarify it in my head. Thank you.
We will secure it. If it, if it goes through, it'll be secured for perpetuity. Okay, Mr. Pape, I think I'm gonna open it up to public. Um, you have your professionals, Mr. Samonte. That is available. There's yourself. You know.
Sure.
Unless, unless we wanted to go to traffic first.
It's, it's your call, sir. Uh, if traffic is brief, traffic is very brief.
I think we should go to traffic first so that we can get the uh, the public to uh, you know, ask the questions, okay?
So, Mr. Ray has been sworn and Mr. Ray's credentials as a traffic expert are part of the record from our hearings last summer. And my questions of Mr. Ray were limited to the following. Are your conclusions in your traffic report um, still valid after you have seen the final version of the site plan?
Uh, yes, they are. As the board may recall, I did testify extensively during the use variance application. And at that point in time, the uh, size of the expansion was significantly larger than it is today. And the conclusions that I reached in the traffic study for the larger expansion. Were that the site driveway would operate at level of service B, as in void during peak hours, which is a good level of service. And then subsequently, uh, we reduced the size of the project. I think it's being reduced another two hundred and sixty square feet. Based on tonight's discussion. And uh, I issued a supplementary letter on February ninth, twenty twenty-two. Indicating that uh, the conclusions that I reached in my original traffic study remain valid as we've only reduced. Uh, the size of the expansion since then. So everything remains as is with respect to my conclusions. That the driveway has adequate capacity and safety to handle the passenger vehicle and truck traffic that will be generated by the uh, operation.
If I may, horizontal and vertical conditions at the site, at the driveway location shown on Mr. Simone's plans.
Are more than adequate for a forty mile per hour speed limit, which is uh, the speed limit on Ramtown Greenville Road.
And the on-site circulation driveway system that has been testified to by Mr. Simone. Do you have an opinion as to its adequacy for the anticipated traffic movements and especially firefighting vehicles?
Uh, well, it's my understanding that Chief Lewis has looked at the plan and signed off on it. But beyond that, yes, the thirty foot aisle that serves as access into the property will will be sufficient for the trucks that'll use the property. Uh, fire vehicles, uh, certainly it's wide enough for passenger vehicles. The turnaround areas have been designed properly. Uh, we have agreed to stripe them as fire zones. So that no one parks in that area or nothing gets stored in that area. They remain open for truck maneuverability and for. Uh, fire vehicles if necessary.
You heard the suggestion or guidance of the chairman and Mr. Conlon. About adding an extra foot of depth to the parking stalls. Assume that the applicant has fully accepted that condition. Are you comfortable that the parking as designed is, is safe and adequate?
Well, I did, to reiterate what uh, Chet Simone testified to. I I I felt the eighteen foot stalls were adequate, but we are gonna make that adjustment. We'll make the stalls nineteen feet deep and eliminate that waiver.
So, is it a safe statement to say that your testimony placed before this board at the time of the use variance? Remains your testimony and opinion and that you find the design to be safe and adequate?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further amidst all right.
Fellow board members, anything for Mr. Ray?
I have one quick one. Uh, can we just be reminded uh, from the, the past, you know, from last summer, what size trucks again?
My um, I, my understanding and uh, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong. There's going to be one tractor trailer WB fifty uh, delivery a day. That's gonna come in on the, the tractor trailer. And if I'm not mistaken, in Mr. Conlon's uh, letter, we agreed. Uh, to limit that activity from nine AM to twelve noon, if I'm not mistaken. So sometime in that three hour window, there'll be one tractor trailer that'll bring the bulk product to the site. And then it'll be broken down and it will go out in somewhere between four and six box trucks on a typical day. That's the extent of the activity.
Thank you for the, thank you for the reminder, sir.
Yeah, and our clients, I think our client box trucks were either twenty-eight or thirty feet. They're just typical box trucks.
Was there a requirement in the orig- in the original application too about whether or not the big trucks? Were able to make a left or right? I I believe something like that was in there.
Yeah.
I don't recall there being a restriction on turning movements for the trucks. Um, somebody may be able to go back and take a look at that resolution. But I, I don't recall that.
Mr. Cantor, I can, I I have it and I, and I will read to you. This is the resolution adopted by the board on. September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one and conditions that were listed on page twenty-seven. The applicant will provide a no left turn sign to restrict traffic exiting from the subject site. The applicant further agreed to delineate a truck traffic travel plan, at-site plan to minimize impact upon local residential subdivisions. Tractor trailer deliveries are restricted to occur between the hours of nine and twelve. No deliveries to the site are to take place during peak traffic hours. And we identified those peak traffic hours.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
In other words, Mr. Cantor. The truck has to, has to depart going towards Arnold Boulevard.
Right, understood.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Pape.
Yeah, I um, I wanna also say, uh, Mr. Cantor asked a question that I was gonna ask, but. Again, what is the weight limit on that road at this time? Uh, would you know, Mr. Pape, I'm not, is it tall ton?
I do not know.
I think that bridge over muddy Ford Brook was recently rebuilt. Now, Mr. Conlon may have a little bit more information on the weight limit, but my recollection is within the last, what, five, six, seven years that bridge was rebuilt.
Yeah, I believe it probably can, but I mean, I think that's an important thing to know. Because I know with the tractor trailers coming in, you're, you're gonna be in that category, whether it's gonna be under the limit or over the limit. So I think that should be clarified if somebody could do that, cause uh, Charlie, would you know?
So, Mr. Burns, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm just looking through Google Street View to see if I could see any weight limits signage or restrictions placed on there. I I can tell you that I do, you know, Mr. Ray's representation that the bridge has been reconstructed is accurate. There was a washout and, you know, partial failure of the bridge years ago. Uh, you know, within the last five years or so, so the bridge has been reconstructed. What the weight limit on that is, I, you know, the applicant would have to investigate that a little bit further. Uh, there might have been some testimony during the use variance on that, but I, but I can't recall off the top of my head.
I don't recall.
Uh, Mr. Pape, I mean, you would, you would be okay as a conditional approval that it would be. The trucks would abide by the weight limit that is there set by the county and by the town.
The answer is yes, and we'll, we'll get that weight limit from the county and we'll add it to the plan as a note.
Okay, and I do um, appreciate that you're keeping the traffic going right from, from the site. Now, what about trucks coming in from the other direction? Is that something that the applicant can try to eliminate as much as possible? Cause I mean, you're still having school activities going on, even though most of the kids are in and out of school before nine.
Yeah, the, the testimony of Mr. Stefanski is that the box trucks are all his trucks. And the drivers take his instructions. They work for him. So he indicated that he would give those directions to his drivers.
Okay, I don't have any further questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members? Okay, not hearing none. So, Mr. Pape. Mr. Reddasty is uh, is with us for.
He's with us to confirm that his building is exactly as he had designed it to the satisfaction of his beam last summer. And also to confirm that he is going to design the monument sign to have architectural features to match the building. And he'll take all signage off the facades of his building. And not to steal Mr. Reddasty's thunder, but that's his entire presentation.
And he's gonna reduce by two hundred. Square feet, the uh, the one foot.
And this, there's gonna be a one foot shrinkage on that building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, board members, I think we should be able to open it up to public.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes?
A second.
Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got it. Aye. Eileen, let's open it to public.
The meeting will now be open to the public. If you're recalling it, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Ed Vango.
We have Ed Vango coming into the meeting.
All right, Eileen, as they come in, when they're done, you gotta, you you gotta put them out, okay?
All right.
Otherwise they, we don't want, okay. Mr. Vanga?
Hi there.
Welcome. You're gonna need to be sworn in by Mr. Bear. So uh, Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Vanga, can you please raise your right hand? You, the, do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Edward, last name Vanga Victor Alpha November Golf Alpha.
With the uh, resident, their citizen is sworn and ready to go.
Got it. So, Mr. Vanga, these questions are for the professionals, not the board members and the applicant.
Understood.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I would just like to get a restatement of the um, number of trucks and the timing. I'm sorry, I had to step away at the exact moment. I think that was being discussed. Can uh, Mr. Pape, you or someone from the team restate for us? Uh, particularly what the maximum number of eighteen wheelers that will be accessing the property? And the time of day that they'll be accessing the property?
Um, we advised the board that we anticipated one, a maximum of one tractor trailer movement on a daily basis. And that it is, uh, it has to occur between nine AM and twelve noon.
Okay, cool. And um, I, I guess this is a comment since I'm not intended to ask questions of the board. Uh, so I guess I'll ask it this way. Mr. Pape, is it your understanding that it is not in your client's interest to grow his business any further? Even though he's enlarging the warehouse, he has no intention of increasing the total number of trucks?
No, he made a commitment to the board that was memorialized in the use variance and all of those terms carry forward.
Okay, and then uh, who would be responsible for enforcement of that? And um, I guess that, that's the end of my question for the moment.
Title thirty-nine?
Title thirty-nine is an, is part of it. That's the, that, that's traffic control and stop signs and one-way signs and the like. But uh, all, all of these are through code enforcement and the zoning official. Uh, those, those are the, the people who have the, the power to enforce all of these regulations.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, and then my last, uh, my last point here will just be a comment. Um, a- as residents, uh, I should have stated this at the beginning. I'm a resident of Woodmere. Uh, which is on Michelle Boulevard immediately behind the property. And it is our concern for the board members that. Uh, we are next to an increasingly large industrial building. The one that seems to be intent on growing. And we have legitimate concerns as to the number of trucks in and out of that area. Um, it, I find it hard to believe that any businessman has no desire to grow his business beyond one delivery a day. When he's considering expanding the property. And while I appreciate all of the effort that was taken to comply with the stormwater. Uh, issues that I, I think, I'm not entirely sure what the, the current litigation is. Um, by the letter, but you know, while we appreciate that you guys are taking steps to do that. I think there is still concern from the residents in the area that we are potentially expanding. A commercial property next to our residential property. And um, I'd like to make that known to the board. Um, the last thing I'll say, just as a comment, um, you know, the, the traffic situation, I, I appreciate the um. Uh, study done by the traffic officer. I'm sorry, I don't have the titles correct. Um, but we also wanna just make sure that the board is aware that we do have concerns around things like school busing. So enforcement of those times and enforcement of the um, number of trucks asset accessing the property is really important to us. And we hope to pass on that um, level of importance to you guys as you consider this application. And that's the end of my testimony, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanga.
An apology for being in my car.
Okay, it's all good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, just to uh, speak to uh, uh, Mr. Vanga's uh, concerns. Um, code enforcement would probably be uh, the primary enforcement uh, on anything. But uh, just as a reminder that um, if you are taking, uh, which I'm sure you are, taking uh, any of the residents' concerns. Um, in reference to your approval or denial, uh, that you make any resolution specific to any conditions. Uh, that you may wanna impose on that. We could only enforce what is in that resolution. So uh, unless specifically stated uh, in the resolution. Uh, it becomes increasingly difficult for us to enforce anything, especially when something is left vague. So I would just ask the board just to keep that in consideration uh, with the approval or any kind of wording in that resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I I appreciate any guidance on the correct procedures for things. I I think plainly stated. Obviously, the residents of our neighborhood, and I think there are gonna be a couple. Some of them have photos of trucks moving in and out of the property. Um, you know, we wanna be good neighbors and as much as it seems like the business owners wanna be good neighbors. Um, we just wanna make sure that this doesn't start with one truck turn into two trucks. And then the police have much better things to be doing than monitoring the traffic in and out of there. Um, so we appreciate uh, any considerations you could put into a resolution or make formal. To ensure that should code enforcement become necessary, um, that we do have a leg to stand on.
Mr. Vanga, very much appreciate your comments. You know, Arnold. Mr. Vanga, very much appreciate your comments. You know, Arnold Boulevard. I'm going to step aside here and tell you that, you know, my children were going to Middle School South and along with many others in Central Hall. You know, we would be going down Arnold Boulevard back and forth for the night shows and everything else. And you know, it became so uh busy and 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 speeding that, you know, we had to put, you know, speed restrictions on Arnold Bou- Boulevard and enforce it. Um, and I think that's something that is very similar to what you're referring to.
It it is, sir. And after the first week of school, if any of you have parents of the district and experience the delays in the busing, I I truly appreciate them moving the restriction or placing the restriction outside of school bus hours, because anything that makes that situation worse, I don't think my wife's gonna make it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Eileen, who else do we have?
Next, we have Candace Dovenero.
Yes, I think I remember Candace Dovenero.
Ding. Starting video.
There you are.
There I am. Hi, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Pape? Oh, not Mr. Pape, Mr. Bear, I'm sorry.
It's getting late, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dovenero, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last.
Candace Dovenero, D as in David, O V as in Victor, E N as Nancy, E R as in Robert, O. I live at fifty-eight Victory Road. I teach at Middle School South. Okay. In house.
Witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman, and ready for comment.
Good. So I've gone over and I've actually been witness to more than one truck entering the premises. Um, the times that you say from nine to twelve, I have videos, well, I've witnessed videos. I can get the that information. Um, and those videos of trucks stopping traffic between the hours of nine to twelve, um, which it is a, we're dealing with a traffic issue. Um, now you're expanding your project. I don't know what you want to call it. Um, there's a lot of concerns I have for you. Do you have any questions for me first? Like, we can narrow it down and we can go through it, because I have several. So, let's talk traffic first.
Yeah, I think that at this time, it is your questioning the two witnesses who have presented testimony.
Right.
I believe that's correct. So I have.
Yep, that Mr. Pape is correct. It's about uh engineering and traffic at this point.
Let's talk about traffic study. Was there a traffic study done and we can guarantee that there is only one truck that enters the premises between nine to twelve?
There was. Well, yes, a traffic study was done. It was, I was, uh, I testified at length during the use variance portion of the uh application. Uh, very detailed traffic study, over a hundred and fifty hours of continuous traffic volume data was collected on Ramtown Greenville Road pre-pandemic when schools were open. And so a detailed traffic study was done. With respect to the one truck, that has been the rep- representation that my client has made to the board. I'm sure it's going to be in the resolution. It's going to be enforceable. So whatever you may have noticed happening out there previously, uh, now the township has some teeth to enforce what's in the resolution. So it should be a little bit better.
Post pandemic, so pre-pandemic would be what time?
It was the counts were done pre, it was uh oh, a hundred and about two weeks in late October, early November twenty nineteen.
Okay, all right, so that's fine. Um, I I know for a fact that there's definitely more than one truck that enters the premises that does back up traffic. We're dealing.
Let let's just reiterate, it's one track the trailer for that, you know, he has the box trucks, so that's a little different, yeah, four to five box trucks.
How big are the box trucks?
Uh, I believe they're twenty-eight feet, something along the twenty-five to twenty-eight feet.
Usually they're about twenty-six. I'm not sure about a twenty-eight footer, but I I know I've driven a twenty-six footer, so I'm familiar with that. It doesn't really back up traffic when you're going to turn into some sort of driveway or whatever. Um, these trucks stop traffic. They're backing up. People are are stopped for ten to twelve minutes. That's a problem.
The existing conditions on the site are not optimal. The commitments we have made is to redesign the entire site. You've heard the testimony that it's it's designed to handle the truck movements. It should, the all the turnaround facilities are on our site. None of that exists today.
I understand. Have you ever been late for work because someone was backing up a truck and they can't? Because there isn't the clearance? I'm just wondering.
I've been late for a meeting because of that, not for work so much.
Yeah.
Hey, well, I'm a teacher and it really is not conducive or.
Well, there shouldn't be more any of that activity anymore because the, as as Mr. Pape indicated and Mr. Sumat testified to, the site is being redesigned to take care of those situations. The driveway is being widened, better curb returns are being put on the driveway. Circulation system on the property is going to permit trucks to turn around on the property so that there shouldn't be any backing out onto Ramtown Greenville Road at all, once this is done.
And you can guarantee that?
I can testify honestly to what I just testified to.
So and you, so but you're guaranteeing that the drivers that you hire with their C D L licenses will be able to do this?
I I'm I'm not the operator. I'm the traffic engineer.
Yeah, and and we, these are commitments that are made to the town memorialized in the resolution. If there is any violation, the enforcement by the zoning officer who spoke just a few minutes ago indicated that as long as the resolution is written with accuracy, they they can enforce them.
And so, I, I, okay, so I would like to ask. I I I know I'm not supposed to address the board, but how are these violations going to be addressed then? Do we just call the police? Because honestly, I've seen them happen. And at this point, we're we're, you're asking for another variance for a warehouse that actually is built in agricultural area um, on a a a narrow road with a new bridge that washed out, which I understand that, you know, you have your your, the bridge is great apparently, but you still can't maneuver your trucks into that area. So you're going to apparently make the area better so that the trucks won't be able to navigate or back up into that parking lot anymore, correct? There will be no more backing up.
Correct. Only onsite.
Designed to handle the trucks moving onsite directly, turn around onsite and exit from the site.
The egress ingress is being moved further to the north. The existing driveway is being going to be memorialized. Should this be approved and put into a conservation easement? Which means no one is going to enter or depart from the the current location.
Oh, so there'll be totally new driveways?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Say. I I really appreciate that. So I I would really, I'm going to revisit those driveways. Um, is this a final meeting this evening?
This is a request for preliminary and final site plan approval, correct?
Okay, we.
The application previously had been granted a use variance, and this is the site plan application portion of it.
And the board is approving of all of the um exact locations of the new um driveways that are being put in. That will not like ha- propose like, we have a, we have a serious traffic issue in our town. We are becoming the warehouse capital of the world or of Monmouth County. Hence the problem. We need to become a no board. I know, Mr. Say, you have heard me. I know that you love me dearly, as I love you. Um, and you feel my pain, but I have been behind that truck.
I can't, we can't let the you know, if you leave the current conditions, it's never going to change. If you move the driveway further to the north with an ingress egress widen it, the truck can get in, turn around and come out without delaying and backing up traffic.
I understand.
So that's what they've presented and put on the record. And that what seems to be at the current time, the most palatable, you know, to stomach what's taking place there right now. Because the condition exists, because the use exists, and we can't stop the existing use.
Right, which is why we're going to change some usage in the future. I'm gonna be part of that. So, yes, loving you all. Um, so that was my whole thing, like title thirty-nine apparently only says that there will only be no more than one truck and you, it guarantees safety.
Well, it's not title thirty-nine. It would be the resolution of approval that would obligate the applicant to comply with what's in the resolution, which code enforcement can enforce. So it's more than title thirty-nine. It's it's go, it's it's it attaches to the property and is a requirement of of the uh operation of the property.
Okay. All right.
If the, if it includes signage, no left turn, truck goes in, turns around, comes out, goes out over the bridge and 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 departs. One tractor trailer between nine AM and twelve AM is what's being discussed. And, you know, title thirty-nine is there to enforce it. If the bridge wipes out, of course, you know, that's between the township code enforcement and law enforcement. If the business needs to still operate until the bridge is repaired, you know, that's a whole nother situation, right? But we're not, as it stands right now, you know, the improve, the site improvement should help the situation.
Okay, and and a WD fifty, I just want to clarify, WD fifty truck is um seventy-two feet in length?
No. Wheelbase, the WB fifth, it's a fifty-foot wheelbase. I think the entire length of the truck, if I'm not mistaken, is sixty-five feet.
Uh, that's a little less than what I like.
I I'm not certain about that, but the turning radius templates that Mr. Sumat laid on the plan show that uh it can maneuver onto and off the site and back up on the site without using Ramtown Greenville Road.
I want, I want the board to just like take that into account because the WD fifty actually goes up to seventy-two feet. And that is not possible as per the C D L to make that turn um regardless. Because due to, I understand, but due to the width of the street, we, I I request the board do a um little bit of study on that.
A condition.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm not going to even address the white cedar, which are, that's like Sherry, I love you, but they're like a few years ago. We're not going to address that. So I can only just address the traffic, correct?
And engineering.
And engineering.
And there's going to be comment with the other witnesses as well.
Well, I'm sure there's some better witnesses on engineering than I am, since, you know, I'm just a teacher. Um.
There's three behind you.
I'm a lot more than that. We can call the next person. Thank you so much for listening to me.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Eileen?
Stupid.
Somebody just said I'm stupid.
Eileen?
David Eskenazi is next.
Okay, Dave Eskenazi.
Eileen, you, I think the chairman of the uh, has asked.
Hello?
Hi, Dave.
How are you guys?
Good, Mr. Bear?
Yes, hi, uh, hi. Uh, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Uh, state your name, spell your last.
David Eskenazi, E S Q U E N A Z I, nine Tiffany Court. Uh, I used to live on Michelle Boulevard and Rutgers Drive over there for about seventeen years. That warehouse area was never more anything than uh a warehouse for a garage place. It was a precision garage doors. It was a book depository when I first moved to Ramtown. It was uh an office space. It was always something small, nothing bigger than a van coming in and out of that area. It was very small. And since this uh Dugine Fish took over, we've had a lot of uh tractor trailers that have been coming in. And the uh the picture that uh Ed Vanga referred to is uh this right here with tractor trailers tying up the entire road that nobody could see what is going on because uh, you know, they hide it. Part of the uh restriction that you guys uh said. Uh, hold on, let me go, yeah, let me see if I can see all of you guys. Uh, part of the restrictions you guys said was only one truck for nine AM to twelve AM. Well, what about twelve AM to eight AM? That traffic, that truck right there tied up the entire street for about twenty-five minutes at eight oh five AM. Just in perfect time for all the school buses to come down to go to the three schools that you have right there. So what's the restrictions for that?
My understanding is it's nine AM to twelve PM, not AM.
You just said it five minutes ago to Candace that it was nine AM to twelve AM. I'm I'm right.
Nine AM to twelve PM.
So that's only one truck while they're in school. I think uh everyone in Ramtown would agree that while the kids are in school, you could drive your trucks in and out. The restriction we'd want would be when the kids are out of school before his kids are in school.
Well, let 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 me say this. I do not believe the current operation has any restrictions on when the trucks can come and go. So all, but the current operation, all, all my client is trying to do is trying to address the satisfaction, to the satisfaction of the board and the residents. He has no restrictions now.
I I fully, I fully respect you, but you're paid to say whatever they tell you to say.
That doesn't mean I'm not telling the truth.
No, you're telling a skewed version of what you believe.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, you don't live there. I'm telling you that.
I've been doing this for forty-eight years.
I've hired you. I know, I know.
I know, yeah.
And it's, there's no reason to, this is a point for comment and questions, like.
I've got stuff lined up. So I'd like to know uh, what's the board prepared to do to stop the trucks from going during school times when kids are going to school and after school to stop the trucks?
I can tell you that what the commitments that we've made are, one is the redesign of the site as John has described, so that we can handle the truck traffic onsite. The second is that there's one tractor trailer between nine and twelve. And the second is that we do not have any tractor trailer movements during the peak school, the during the peak hours, which are seven to nine and four to six.
So no tractor trailers, that's on record, seven to nine, four to six.
Yeah, the only time a tractor shows allowed on the site is nine to twelve in the morning. That's correct.
Okay.
It's in the resolution already from ten twenty-one.
Uh, I also read somewhere that you guys are asking for a ten-foot buffer in the back. Is that true? Is that like you want a variance to to go from fifty to ten feet? Is that still that?
No.
No? Okay, so let me just grab that out next. And the last thing I have is a statement that I have towards the board. I know I'm not allowed to ask you guys questions, but I'd like to really ask all of you, how could any of you guys even think of approving a forty thousand commercial warehouse space in the middle of five hundred homes that are off of Ramtown Greenville Road and Arnold Boulevard? With probably half the kids that go to those three schools living off of those blocks. All their bikes, right? My kids ride their bikes up and down to the Wawa all the time. Even my eight-year-old, I trust to get on a bike and move around and go, yeah, no problem, head off to your friends. But you know what? With all these trucks and different vehicles that you guys have coming in and out of there, I'm nervous. I don't want them driving on Ramtown Greenville Road anymore. I don't want them going on their bikes, going over to the stream to go fish. Because it's dangerous now. And you guys don't understand that. This building does not belong in that neighborhood. That building belongs off five forty-seven. They want to go to Route nine. It's a beautiful building, beautiful trees, great window shade treatments, great uh, you know, stormwater management, all beautiful D E P. It does not belong on Ramtown Greenville Road, and all you guys know that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Eileen?
Next is Mike Oregon.
Mike, welcome.
Here, how are we doing?
We're doing okay. We're here. Uh, Mr. Bear is going to swear you in. We're doing okay. We're here. Uh, Mr. Bear is gonna swear you in.
Mr. Corrigan, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Mike Corrigan, C O R R I G A N.
And your address, too, please.
Twelve Michelle Boulevard. Uh, I was hoping maybe we could pull up the schematic or the color rendering of the actual property, so we could focus on the northeast portion of the property. It's kind of where a lot of my questions are gonna lie. We've been focusing a lot on the front of the property, the farm side of the property. I kind of want to go towards that that side of the property if we could.
With the engineer.
Yes, that would be great. This is the color rendering. I see there's kind of trees around there, but that's not the tree part of it. Uh, go towards the back. I guess they'd call them the sand bases. I think that's what Charles Colvin, am I correct?
Yes, you are.
So just to kind of rear, I think Mike mentioned something and also Charles about no fencing. I mean, I live on the northeast side of that property. My kids go in those woods, friends that goes in those woods. Will those basins not have any water in them at all? Is that what we're stating from the engineer? Just a sand basin?
They'll have temporarily, they'll have up to about two and a half feet of water.
Okay, so then my request to the board is, I require definitely chain link fence, something to protect, you know, kids. Uh, even not even my kids, anyone walking through the woods, I think that would be something I would definitely strive to the board. I know we're talking about maybe doing some cedar post fencing and and things of that nature, but just for being on that side of that property, I would definitely request that if they go approve this application. I would want that in writing, something that would be in that part. Um, just something I think that that would benefit our neighborhood or even just my property alone. Concern is to, I haven't heard much about hours of operation. I don't know if I missed that. Um, if Mr. Pape could maybe explain the hours of operation and whatever hours he mentions. Can we restrict that into the resolution to make sure that's a requirement? And then my next comments will be the same thing on times, uh, traffic control. Uh, delivery times, if he mentions that, can we make sure we have that in writing? And that put in the resolution, so the enforcement officer knows what to go about, because I heard if it's just kind of up in the air, they won't necessarily know exactly what to enforce. Uh, we know, I know we all want to be good neighbors here, but I just want to make sure if Mr. Pape could go over those hours, those times. If it's one truck, is one truck gonna be in writing and those hours are going to be nine to twelve? Um, I know they're not enforced now, they can do whatever they want, and that's why we're at this point trying to enforce the regulations the way hopefully to make that property a better option for everybody. So could you go over those hours and times and delivery times, so that be put into that writing?
Sure. They are already in the resolution from two thousand twenty-one. The resolution, any of the conditions in that resolution carry forward to any further relief of support grants. And they read as follows, this is on page twenty-seven, cat number J, I already read in, that's the no left turn, K is tractor trailer delivery restricted to the hours of nine AM to twelve PM, nine AM to noon, weekdays only. No deliveries to take place um during the peak traffic hours. The hours of operation for the site are limited to six AM to six PM, Monday to Thursday. Six AM to twelve at noon on Friday and Sunday. And there is no work or activity on the site on Saturdays. And further, there's no backup beepers permitted to be used by any vehicles on the property prior to seven AM. Those were all made part of the use variance and carried forward.
All right, I would request that six AM on Sunday is definitely not something that the board should approve. That should not be the correct hours of operation. That is, my kids are still sleeping at six AM in the morning. If I hear you know, I mean, from what I'm looking at the drawing, the northeast portion, it looks like it's a backup area. Is that a backup area for tractor trailers, the one that's supposed to only come in from nine to twelve? Or is that a safety exit for fire trucks, ambulances, since there is no turnaround at all in the the drawing that I see? I see the loading areas in the center of the property pretty much. The north part, it looks like they might back up towards the rubbish and kind of turn in. Am I the back section of the property have no tractor trailer traffic at all?
The tractor tra- trailer traffic, and this was testified to extensively when the building was designed. You'll see that there is uh an alcove between the existing building and the new building.
I do see that.
Yeah, that that's where the tractor trailers will back in.
So they're going to pull towards, I guess, the old area where they dumped everything and back into those areas? Is that the plan of the tractor trailers?
I mean, I don't drive a tractor trailer, but you, I don't drive a tractor trailer, but I think that they would drive past that and then they would back in, they'd want their trailer.
Okay, so they would go straight, lights would face towards the residential properties, and then it would back theirself back into the lot, correct? That's kind of where we're going with it. I just want to compare the back section of the property, it seems like we're kind of keeping agriculture, more tree related. I don't want tractor trailers to be backing up into the fire lane and using it as a turnaround place with different hours of the day, light spacing into the back of my property, you know, that's a major concern I have.
Got it. Yeah, it's that's.
Um, another concern I have is, I mean, I I run a business, um, I have waste. My my main concern is that rubbish area. I mean, I'm not as big as Mrs. As this place is, and that doesn't look like that would even hold enough rubbish for just me. So my concern is the board should look at the size of where they're gonna if they're repackaging material, they're gonna have a lot of recycling, right? A lot of plastics, a lot of trash. Repacking and sending it back. My concern is that area doesn't seem like it's going to be enough for trash. My concern is the protection of the wildlife, protection of my property, windstorms. I just feel like that's not a big enough area for rubbish for what they're doing. Now, it's not pre-existing use to doing something different, so now my concern is what are they gonna do with all their trash? If they're repackaging, that's a very, very small area to repackage all their materials.
We'll gladly revisit it with Mr. Conliff, but it was designed to be adequate. There was no restriction on how big it could be, it was designed to be adequate.
My my concern is just the board to kind of take that into the observation when they're, we're gonna approve the final approval or not. Um, back into the area too, is there a ten-foot burn around the whole property? Um, maybe I should ask, is that is that correct? Is there a ten-foot bur around the whole property where the buildings can sit down into the lot?
Uh, Mr. Sumat, if you could describe the the landscaping in Birmingham that's part of your plan.
Yeah, the uh coming off of the fifty-foot buffer in the rear.
Yes, correct, sir.
And along both basins two and three. There's about a ten-foot grade drop from the, well, from the buffer line to basin three is about a ten-foot gradient downward. And then as you get behind basin number two, the the same situation, maybe uh maybe eight or nine feet. Uh, the basin sits that, that's the top of the basin, not even the floor of the basin.
I see it.
Basin's probably twelve or thirteen feet down from the high point around the back of the uh, around the back of the buffer.
And is there gonna be a possible six-foot bur of trees around that ten-foot burn? Uh, so you're talking almost sixteen feet difference before you actually get to that level? Or what 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 are we looking at exactly?
When you say uh sixteen?
So on, so if we have a ten-foot grade, right, on top of that ten-foot grade to where that is, that's only where the basin is. My concern is the the level of the building. So if that ten, that ten foot is just for the basin grade. I'll make sure that I'm not seeing twenty-two feet of building, maybe I'm only seeing four feet of the building.
Well, if you were standing, are are, do you happen to live in uh one of those properties?
I do, I live at twenty-six point oh eight, it's the top right section of the property line.
All right, if you stand in the back line of your property, you'll be standing eight feet above the finished floor of the building.
Okay.
About nine or ten feet above the level of the of that little backup area for the emergency vehicle closest to your property.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was in the final drawings. The plan, because my concern, obviously, being in a residential property, having something commercially being built in the back of my property that's being approved. I want to avoid as much commercial issues I might have, such as trash, lighting, tree, debris, noise, time. So I just want to make sure that that's definitely in there. Uh, since my property is definitely morally being affected than more than most on this whole entire plan besides the farmland, so I guess would be the east. Uh, no hazmats on the property, we're only repackaging goods. We don't have to have a hazmat license, correct, Mr. Pape?
That's correct, and the recitation of all that was incorporated into the site, the use variance resolution as to what materials were allowed to be.
Okay.
On site, it was prepackaged, pre-canned food products to be distributed from the site. No food processing is permitted. No storage of hazardous, flammable, or pollutant products on site is permitted. And no overnight parking of vehicles in the loading zone is permitted.
Okay, and uh I appreciate your time. I just want to make sure the board hears more of our comment at the preservation of a royal character. I feel like this does not do that. I know that the building's already been approved. Just please put in as many restrictions that are required to keep our residential the correct way, the right trees, the right lighting, the right noise, and restrict it the tenant as much as possible, so we can alleviate any problems in the future with calling code enforcement, with calling anyone else who might be concerned like police and trafficking. So I appreciate your time and and uh best of luck on whatever you decide to do.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Eileen.
Joe Mauer is next.
Joe, welcome.
Hi, how's it going?
It's going. It's uh, it's ten thirty almost. But uh we want to hear what you have to say, so and any comments or questions for the professionals slash the applicant. Mr. Bear, would you please swear in Mr. Mauer?
Mr. Mauer, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please.
Uh, Joseph Mauer, M A U E R, and thirty-one Michelle Boulevard.
Um, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna, I know Title thirty-nine came up um a little bit with code enforcement. Um, I just want to speak on behalf of that, kind of set set the record straight. Um, I'm a police officer, not in Howell, um, but I am a local in Monmouth County. Um, none of this has to do with Title thirty-nine, so the police can't be involved, any of this, it's all strictly code enforcement. Um, and basically, the police are called, they're not gonna be able to do anything about it. Um, just want to basically let everyone know that the police really can't do any enforcement. I know code enforcement is more like they run banker hours, they're not twenty-four seven. So something's going on, you know, at uh nine o'clock at night. You know, we're S O L on that. Um, you know, in in as far as uh the traffic studies are going, I heard it was pre-COVID back in two thousand nineteen. Um, I would urge that maybe a new study take place at three years old. And uh, you know, in three years, this area has gained a lot more traffic. I could definitely tell you that. Um, I've seen trucks, I personally witnessed these trucks coming in. Uh, past those hours, I see them late afternoon. We're talking fifty-three-foot trailer, tractor trailers, um, backing up on Ramtown Greenville. Um, I seen them ripping in there, making left turns, highest high-rated speed around that corner on that bridge. It's not safe, it's not safe at all. Um, and uh, you know, this is, you know, area two, this is a rural area. I mean, you know, like like Dave said before, this just doesn't belong here, you know, there's abandoned buildings all throughout Howell Warehouse Districts and something that size belongs there, this is, I I don't even know how it got the usage uh approved, and I know there's ongoing litigation for that with the prior usage. Um, but there was also rumors going around that there's possibly gonna be walking paths connecting some residents and uh Michelle Boulevard to this warehouse to gain access as a shortcut. Um, down at Ramtown Greenville and Arnold Boulevard. Um, so that could also be a potential restriction to be put into place. Um, some type of walking paths they wanted to put in, and that's, like I said, it's just rumors. Um, not sure if that's, you know, any concrete, but uh, you know, I there's just a lot of, a lot of safety concerns with this, with the traffic. And it's just, it just doesn't fit fit in this area. Um, but those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Pape. There's a lot, there's a lot that came out here.
Yeah.
You know, and um you know why don't we say we digest this? And uh maybe carry it? Did I lose everybody?
So, Mr. Chairman, are we finished with the public comments?
Yeah, there's, there's no more public raising their hands.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not accused of
No, so.
Closing early.
Are you, are you making a motion to close the public?
I am asking if there's any more public comments before I make such a motion.
Yep.
And and uh, this.
There is one more, I'm sorry.
Just raise your hand.
They just raised their hand. Kathy Novak.
Your discretion, Mr. Chair.
Let's bring Miss Novak in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Miss Novak, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I'm just, I'm just gonna, I wasn't going to speak.
Let's get you sworn in, please.
Oh, okay.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last, and please provide your address.
Kathy Novak, sixteen Stratton Drive, Howell. I wasn't going to speak at all, but I'm very upset from what I've, what I just heard, a a board member uh of a uh, one of these uh zoning board members call a resident fucking stupid. And I'm just wondering, go back to the videotape and and see, that person should be recused from this, this uh application. Thank you. And I, and I'm not the only one who heard it. I I have been in contact with many people who are on this, watching this now, and they all heard it. So you can play the tape, and that person should recuse themselves.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got Miss Dovenero. Miss Kuza, let's let's bring Miss Dovenero back, please.
Miss Dovenero is coming in the meeting.
Welcome back, Candace.
Hi, sorry, I apparently I'm the one who's effing stupid. So, yeah, it was Mr. Moriety who called me that. And I do have that recorded on my, by my own means. So I think he should refrain from using those words with a member of the town, as I I am, I've been a member of the town for probably longer than he has, and I do, I did find that offensive, and I actually made note of that, and I'm sure that's going to be recorded. I have it. So I I do take offense to that, and Mr. Moriety should mind his manners and take note and be advised that that language is not appropriate.
Still Dovenero.
Mrs. Bit, um, it's been arrow, may I say, I apologize if you took.
I'm sorry, you can't apologize.
No, you didn't, you didn't let me finish my statement. I wasn't talking to you. I was talking to the person that's behind me. They, that's, I wasn't calling you what stupid, I wasn't calling you stupid. I was talking to the person behind me.
You don't have anybody behind you, honey.
You don't think there could be anybody behind me? You don't think there could be anybody behind me? Huh? There's a door, there's uh, there's all kinds of stuff in my room.
Not during live Zoom. That is why maybe perhaps we should be in public. That shouldn't happen ever.
I agree with you.
I'm a teacher, and if I use that language in my classroom, that is not appropriate under any circumstances.
I agree with you.
I'm not here to chastise you, but I'm glad that other members saw it, because I recorded it myself.
You're chastising me right now.
Well, I'm super sorry, but you made a mistake.
To apologize for you for something that you misunderstood. I was not talking to you. I was talking to the person behind me, and if you took it, I was addressing you. I'm apologizing for that, but I was not referring to you, because that was totally.
We can revisit the video. It's fine. Thank you, sir. I'm done here.
Ms. Ms. Dovenero?
Yes.
You know, the board extends its apology to you.
I'm fine with it. I I've actually been called worse.
I I am.
Just not in public.
I am so sorry that apparent mishap may have happened.
We should always mute that.
You know, and um, look, it's been, it's getting late.
It is, and I have to be, I have to be up at four thirty, because I have to be at split seven.
I know, I know.
God bless us all.
Well, thank you.
It's been a blessed evening. Thank you for all the compliments that I've received. They were always like, they're in my heart.
You're you're doing, you're doing well. Thank you.
I am as well. Thank you. Have a great night.
You too now.
Take care.
Mr. Pate?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I don't see anyone else from public. Uh, we're going once, we're going twice.
Mr. Chairman, motion to close to public.
Right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I, we've closed the public, Eileen.
Meeting will be now closed to public.
But we are not complete. We are far from finished because we still have others that we need to hear from. And then we'll be opening up to public again. So, Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Bear? I'm wondering if we can uh, if we can carry this. Uh, I wanna, I want to revisit some of the residents' comments and make sure that we understand what it is that they've been asking for, so we can capture it.
Mr. Chairman, also, uh, before we speak, I wanted to just clarify that I a confirmation on the weight limit on that bridge and that road for the next meeting is as well.
That would give us some time, yes.
I guess, Eileen, what is the uh, what's the deadline right now?
Uh, I think it's fire on the twenty fourth.
Of September?
Oh. All right, never mind.
Is Mr. Vargas with you?
I'll have to look into the expiration date for this one.
This, if I may, Mr. Chair, we have one witness to testify. Not asking that that witness testify this evening, but Stephen Redasti, our architect, will testify. I gave you a summation of of the three points that he'll make. I believe that his direct testimony will be approximately ten to fifteen minutes at the most. We'll have the additional information that you've asked, that you and other board members asked that we gather that we'll share with the board. We can do that in just a matter of days. That's not difficult to assemble. Um, if the the public examination of the two witnesses is concluded, so when you open it to the public, it would be examination limited to Mr. Redasti. Is there a chance that you could put us on the top of your agenda on the nineteenth? I don't think we would take more than forty five minutes. Eileen?
Uh, for September nineteenth, I have an one extension of time. I have one application being carried. And um, I have countryside on that date as well.
So we should be able to squeeze this one in upfront, yes?
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. Chair, that would be a real courtesy to the applicant, and we'll extend the courtesy and come back prepared with the answers that you requested of us. Yes, Mr. Pate, there is a lot of a lot of soul searching here with regards to traffic, you know, the improvements versus what's existing right now. And uh, what does it do? You know, basically with lighting, you know, egress, ingress, you know, time of day. All of that has to be addressed. We'll make sure that we have a very clear and concise summary of the commitments that were made.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. May I ask that we be carried to the nineteenth without the requirement of redenew or publication? And if there's anyone who's a member of our team that has an issue with that evening, you could please announce it. Okay. Not not hearing anyone, a- a- anyone? Yeah, no, good.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I am advised, I think Ms. Beam has a conflict next Monday, maybe. Uh, Christine's available, but.
Um, I don't know of Jen having a conflict next Monday.
Well, she just texted me.
Well, I I am available next Monday.
Okay.
All right, good. So for anyone that's with us for case number B A twenty dash one zero seven S P three sixty six Ramp Town Greenville Road LLC. This application is being carried to the top of the list on September nineteenth twenty twenty two with no further notice and no further extension of time. Mr. Chairman, all board members and professionals, thank you all, and good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye bye. Everyone, thank you for this evening. Uh, we'll see you on next week, and um, we'll continue on.
Christine, a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hughes, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, Eileen, shut it down. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.